Like to call the order of Wayrica City Council meeting, special meeting agenda. August 30th, all rise saying the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of North Carolina. One nation under God, in the US law, without any contest.
Thank you all for coming. Please silence your cell phones so we don't get the interruptions. We had no reportable action on the closed session earlier. Jump into special presentations at this time. We have Siskiyou County Economic Development giving us an update. Thank you. Hello there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tanya Douse, and I'm with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. I'd like to open by saying economic development is the creation of wealth from which community benefits are realized. It's an investment in growing our economy and enhancing the prosperity and quality of life for all local residents. So the Siskiyou EDC is a local nonprofit. We were originally formed by some Wayrica business interests to help the city and the county create a climate for, to support private businesses and private investment in our communities. All of this was intended to grow the local tax base and provide a quality community for our residents. Our mission today is still to support business growth, expansion, and retention. So we have not strayed far from our roots. In fact, we firmly believe that the path to community vitality and prosperity is through a robust and vibrant local economy with private business as the foundation. We often credit the enduring success of our organization to the legacy commitment that was made by our local jurisdictions and was originally initiated by the city of Wayrica back in the early days. The city of Wayrica has invested in our work for over thirty-seven years continuously, and we take very seriously the role of stewarding that investment. In fact, we leverage it ten and twenty times over. In our years of service to Wayrica, we have grown and evolved, and today we've built a professional team of twelve that are all housed in our home base right here in the city of Wayrica. I thought it would be interesting to reflect on an early project, and for me, this is probably the most, the one I could most identify with. And it's notable in that we worked with the city of Wayrica to secure grant funding to support the major expansion of NorCal products back in the eighties. That expansion placed NorCal at the location that they are in today, and it secured their manufacturing operations for Wayrica for decades to come. In just the past recent decade, we've been engaged in projects ranging from retail development such as grocery outlet, Walmart, superstore, Holiday Inn, Tractor Supply, Starbucks, the new Arby's, just to name a few examples. We were very involved in helping support the industrial developments on Phillips Lane. We worked with you to launch a tourism strategy that grew and evolved into Discover Siskiyou. And we currently operate the small business development that directly serves over a hundred, over a hundred local businesses. Also during this recent decade, our team has delivered literally tens of millions in grant funds to support critical infrastructure for Wayrica, funding to support everything from transportation to brownfields to entrepreneurism to innovation to workforce, et cetera. So today I just want to thank you for the opportunity to engage, and we are very interested in learning from you about your emerging priorities and to provide opportunity and invite your input so that you can help inform and lead our next decade of service. And on that note, I really want to turn this podium over to my wonderful teammates who have joined me and who would like to share with you a snapshot of our current portfolio of work. So I'm going to introduce Ms. Heather Dodds, Cory Hayden, and Alia Roca-Lazra, who have joined with me today to share again with you just a quick snapshot of today's work.
Hello, I'm Heather Dodds. I'm program director for Discover Siskiyou, the tourism program that Tanya just mentioned. And I just wanted to give you all kind of a brief update on some of our tourism-based activities that have been focused specifically on Wayrica over the last several months. So we have a couple of event marketing awards that we've given out. First one was in March, we awarded the Shasta gravel hugger race $20,000 to invite cycling social media influencers to their race as well as create a documentary video to promote future events. And even though this happens out in Shasta Valley, the primary lodging is in Wayrica. So we see a huge benefit for that here, and it was really fun to be able to support them. It's a really popular event. And then in August, we awarded the North Siskiyou Chamber $5,500 in event marketing assistance for the balloon festival out in Montague. Again, even though it's in Montague, the lodging is primarily here. We were able to secure fifty-seven room nights at local hotels for pilots and band members, and that's not even including the people who are coming out of town for that three-day event. So that was really cool. We were able to help them build a website so they could do online ticket sales as well. And then in June, we ran a paid social campaign to support the Wayrica Gold Rush Days event. So that's just a little snapshot of some of our event support we've offered. Social media in May, we hosted an influencer called the Girl Scout, and she featured OHV opportunities in the Wayrica area specifically up on Humbug. And so it was really fun to be able to feature Wayrica in that. And then we also used our social media channels during the McKinney fire to let visitors know that, you know, the areas where it wasn't safe to visit, areas to steer clear from, but also other areas in the county where they could visit safely. And we created a group called the Siskiyou Smoke Report to try and get the word out that, you know, all of Northern California isn't on fire all summer and to kind of keep people from canceling trips just because they perceive that all of Northern California might be smoky. So that's been really popular, and that's been new this year. We worked with Shasta Cascade and Visit California on a Google Business Optimization project. So that was helping local businesses. We had ten Wayrica businesses sign up that we helped just to optimize their Google business listing. So that's where you have your hours of operation. We helped them get new beautiful photos up because, you know, most people these days find business information on Google. So it's important that everything is up to date and looks great, and we can kind of just put our best foot forward. So that was really a fun project to work on. And then we also hired a photographer to capture photos of Wayrica areas, including Minor Street, Greenhorn Park, and the Siskiyou County Museum. And we provided those photos for Wayrica businesses to use in their marketing efforts as well. So if you guys haven't seen those, I'm happy to send a link. They're super beautiful. And then I wanted to mention quickly just a couple new ad placements. We are now running ads in the Medford and Reading airports, which is new, and we have QR codes on those ads. So we can actually see how many people are scanning those and visiting our website and where their hometown is based on where their cellphone quote-unquote lives. So that's really cool. We've had scans from like Portland as far away as New York, but primarily from the Bay Area and Sacramento. We're also going to have ads at Gran Zella's, and we are updating our artwork that is at the Collier Rest area and hoping to add some more marketing at the Collier Rest area as well. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was we justified for a $250,000 USDA grant. It's called the Rural Innovation Placemaking Challenge, and it's kind of piggybacking off of that Recreation Economy for Rural Communities workshop that I think you all are familiar with that happened over the summer, and we're looking at assessing the feasibility of hosting large-scale events in Wayrica and looking at, you know, things that we might need to bolster up or, you know, what assets we have currently that we can market to event organizers and make Wayrica just a really awesome destination for events in the future. That's just a little snapshot of tourism. Cory is up next.
We will have a time at the end for questions where you can ask any one of us questions about any topic that we present. So as you guys might have caught on, this document that you have today is a roadmap to most talking points that you've heard Heather mention and that I'll mention today, which means you don't have to remember any acronyms or titles that we might speak to up here. Everything's on your roadmap in front of you. So my name is Cory Hayden. I'm a program manager with the Siskiyou EDC. I think I've been there four years now. And you often see me be here for updates, so I'm really glad to be here today. And I'm going to share again our current portfolio of work that you will see in your community specifically over the past few months and upcoming months. So as you know, Tanya mentioned the formation of the Small Business Development Center, and this is our work where we work with clients across Siskiyou County. Our work with them is confidential. So you never see us stand up here and share exactly who they are, but the types of services that we offer is one-on-one advising. We also match clients to specific expertise that they're seeking that can be for marketing, human resources, capital, and fiscal opportunities for them. And I also serve as an advisor in my expertise area, which is marketing, websites, social media. I can be a generalist as well. And so as an employee of the council, I also serve business clients directly with my time. We have some new programs underneath the category of what we call business innovation. And this is where we can work with an industry cluster. So if you think about timber as a whole, outdoor recreation as a whole, agriculture as a whole, we're dedicating new resources and programs through cohorts, cohort experiences where they can work in small groups to elevate their industry, where we match them with expertise or infrastructure resources. So one of the most exciting and recent programs I'm glad to share with you today is our work that has evolved into Siskiyou Farm Co., Siskiyou Farm Co. And so this takes our agriculture producers from across the county who are developing unique foods or unique food brands coming from our region. And we have provided a one-stop shopping experience for those items. So if you think of like Etsy or Amazon where you can shop and check out with one transaction, that's what Siskiyou Farm Co. does for our local foods. And so Pickup is located in Wayrica on Tuesdays at 3:30. And the reason why you might just be hearing about this for the first time is because we're doing what you call beta testing. So we have fifty shoppers from across Siskiyou County who are using the platform right now to shop and pick up, and they're giving us feedback on the portal, identifying any snags. And then we also have several producers who are uploading their products and fulfilling these items. So you get this really great box of Siskiyou Farm Co. items. Jason Friendly Foods is an example. If you're familiar with his chocolate, that's one example of products there. But there is fresh local beef produce and wine, chocolate grains, just to name a few. So we're really, really excited about this. You can, if you think about it, it's business innovation, it's business incubation, it's downtown revitalization, depending on where the pickup location is. And so we're really excited about this, this program. And if any of you would like to be beta testers to test out the profile, just let us know, and we'd love to set you up with that. As we've mentioned before, one of our Keystone activities this year and recently was the award of the Rural Innovation Stronger Economy Grant. That's known as RISE. That's the short term, the short acronym. And this will provide construction dollars for the rehabilitation of Carnegie and also innovation funding for business innovation activity where we continue this work with industry sectors like I mentioned. You have been with us every step of the way for the CDBG Carnegie Planning Grant. And so we're pleased to report, as you may know, that our work with our architecture and engineering company has been going on for several months. In October, we will be here for a full presentation on those renderings, plans, square footage costs. So we're really excited to be back and dedicate a complete presentation to the Carnegie. But in the meantime, I brought a little glimpse of some renderings that the company did for us. Renderings are always fun to look at. I'll just going to share this around. One of the big aspects of the project was to create ADA access to the grand main floor. It's a challenge that I think has probably faced generations. And our, our architecture and engineering company has provided a design and proposal with, with a really, I think, attractive and compelling solution. And so like I said, we just want you to know how excited we are to come back in October to give you a full presentation on the Carnegie and how delightful it's been to work with that team as a result of that planning grant for CDBG. We, Alia really spearheaded the community input process and some facilitation and a great partnership with the city to bring the rural economy, recreation stakeholders, community members, steering committee, federal partners to Wayrica. If you had a chance to be at any part of it, it was really fun and dynamic and exciting. We want to thank the city of Wayrica for their incredible support over several phone calls, over a two-day workshop, over a dynamic tour. The input that came from it was thorough and I think really, really contributive to all of our plans and goals for different avenues. And so we were really happy to provide the tour design, the technology. We, we facilitated, we held, we, I'm going to say we secured the facility for the conference locally. We helped with lodging arrangements. We invested quite a bit of funding to make that an incredible experience. We were very, very inspired by those two days, and we had visitors here from the EPA, the EDA, the USDA, and they continue to communicate back to us with funding opportunities to continue this work. Heather mentioned the USDA RPIC placemaking grant that we were able to apply for on behalf of Wayrica. We will await to hear if we will be awarded that funding. But we, Alia and I got an email today from a federal partner with another funding opportunity. So there are people across the United States thinking of Wayrica. And when the EPA promotes their twenty communities where they're doing this work, we are on that list. So there's a lot of people seeing our goals for the outdoor recreation economy. So we just want to thank you guys for that experience that we were glad to be a part of. Alia oversees several programs, one of which is the Brownfields Program. And so you can see here on your map that we gave a little vignette as to the Brownfields projects that have been completed recently. And so I'll just let her list off what I see as four projects and speak to any, any aspect of the Wayrica Brownfields Coalition because your leadership has provided the infrastructure for several projects both in Wayrica and across the county.
Hi, I'm Alia Roca-Lazra. I'm the Brownfields Program Coordinator for the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. There we go. Yeah, so this past quarter, we completed four assessment projects. The first one was the Ringy Pool, completed that in March. Shops, the Shop Smart on Main Street, completed that in June. Those are both Phase One analyses. We completed the Phase Two Assessment for the Carnegie Library. And we completed one more that I'm forgetting at the moment, the Quartz Valley School, which is on in Wayrica, but that was funded by the Coalition Grant as well. And we also kicked off an EPA Technical Assistance Program for electric vehicle locations in the county. So we're looking at potentially locating an EV charging station at the Carnegie Library when the time comes. So those are my updates. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I'm going to, the last thing I'm going to tell you about, we have a shared MOU between our organizations that outlines a pretty specific work plan, and on that work plan is data research and also grant seeking. So you've heard a few examples of grant seeking today, but the data and research piece, I wanted to give you a little vignette of. Heather mentioned our program that we call Placer and some ways that Discover Siskiyou uses that. So I pulled three data points today specific to the city of Wayrica. I pulled just visitor data, unique visitors in one year of the Wayrica Truck Stop year-over-year comparison. I pulled data on Wayrica Old Town, including the peak day so far from the year. I pulled some data from Wayrica reallys and then just Wayrica in general. And so I asked our colleague Jason Young if he would pull this for me, and he go, any call means Cory, you're going to be happy. Oh, good. Tell me, Jason. And so as you can see here, you can see visitor increases in each of those locations in this year compared to last year. You can see, for example, at the truck stop, a peak day there is Thursdays and the peak hour is 6:00 PM. With Old Downtown, they, we can see that there's 48,000 unique visitors in a year. The average time they're spending is 165 minutes, which sounds like a very great experience in downtown Old Town Wayrica to me. Peak days are Friday and Sunday. Peak hours are 12 to 1:00. My favorite statistic that they were able to pull for the year was that the peak day of visits was June 18th, 2022. That was a Saturday. That was Gold Rush Days. That was my hope, and sure enough, that was the case. So that was very exciting. And so I'm just going to pass around, and you can keep these if anyone loves data. But this is how the raw data comes off of Placer. And so you might look at it once and be like, I don't quite understand it. But the second time, you'll pull a few things out. And like I said, just feel free to pass this along, look at it if it interests you. I don't need this back, but these are the original packets where I pulled the data from for all those data sets. Three million visits to Wayrica in a year. The number of visitors, 589,000. Frequency of visit, six times. Average time in the city, 315 minutes. And so as Heather mentioned, this is aggregate data from cellphone use, and these from every industry that has learned that we use Placer, they have validated that this is one of the best platforms that you can use to estimate visiting and economic data. That, do you guys have questions for us? Do you guys have input? Knowing we'll be back in October and we're just here listening to all of you and any questions or insights that you guys have.
Awesome. Thanks, you guys. Is there any questions from the council?
Just that last data that you gave, the three million visits to Wayrica.
The packet is now with you, Joan, so let me peek over. But the first thing, they're all different. Oh, thanks, Jason. He knew exactly what I mean, needed. This year, 3.8 million visits to Wayrica. 589 visitors, 589,000 unique visitors. The visit frequency, six times. So I presume that means that a visitor might be visiting Wayrica six times in a year in terms of this analysis, that they're staying for 315 minutes. That's, that's what, that's that. That's that.
I would like to let everyone know how much I enjoyed going on the workshop on the tour. It was even better to go and hear what people from out of the area were discussing, were the good points of our community. And it taught me a lot. I appreciated it very much. And maybe next time we can invite Skip to go and see what it's about.
We would love to see what Skip would write about that kind of experience.
But I also just want to chime in and say that they, you know, I appreciate them coming in here. I think there's a lot that the EDC does that maybe, you know, we're not aware of at some point. And so I think maybe it's not today, but they're going to come back in October and give us a real, a pretty intense update, it sounds like. And so I would just hope that the council maybe brainstorms, as we think of strategic planning, some other opportunities that you may want to see EDC focus on so that we're all on the same page and aware and everybody feels like we're moving in one direction because they have a ton of capacity. We're lucky to have them in the city of Wayrica, and they have a pretty excellent staff. And so it would be nice to get your guys' input in October.
I'd say that would be a good time. It's okay with the council. Would you guys bring it back to us? Just to have more thorough questions from the council and just have questioning to say, if you guys are moving this direction, what about this? Or just some more general questions on what we visualize, you know, of what the city's direction wants to go, you know? Obviously, you guys are countywide, so we want to see what the citywide wants to go, the direction. But we know that you guys do a ton, a ton of work for us, and we appreciate that massive, all the massive work you guys do. I mean, there's a ton of stuff you guys do for us, and being able to bring that forth and showing us that was, you know, helps us a lot. But also it'll help us in, you know, with deciding what direction we need to go to. So, I mean, so we can all be on one sheet of music and move the proper direction for the city and the county, so.
Absolutely. I just wanted to chime in a little bit with Debbie and say that tour that you guys put together was awesome. But you know what? I mean, even being a local, I learned, I learned a lot on that tour as well. But the workshop that month and the next day was, that was really rewarding because all the people, EPA, USDA, there were so many people there that had funding available. And when we talked about the type of projects that we'd like to see in our town, they would chime up and say, well, you know, there's funding in my agency for that, and these are the dates that you have to apply for. So I'm really pleased to hear that, that you applied for that $250,000. That was one of the, one of the things. And we said, you know, we're interested in that, you know, do you think we qualify? And they said, sure, you know. So thank you for applying for that.
I want to take advantage of the folks that are here. And I know that they are, have a broad scope on economic development, but there is this other opportunity that should probably be discussed here with the council member Barrett had brought up in the past. And that was the fact that we're moving closer to Night of Lights. And any, is there interest from this council to engage the EDC? Should I be engaging the EDC on Gold Rush and Night of Lights, I guess is my question.
And the parade. And the parade.
The parade's a big one, you know.
I think that's a great idea because that North Siskiyou Chamber was going to do those events for us, and now they found that they can't. And so I think, you know, with the work that you've done, I know Cory, you worked so hard on Gold Rush Days. You did such a great job and bring it all together in the rain. I think that's a good opportunity.
So I think, I think that's something we need to bring back as a future topic of this council at this point in time.
Well, we can't wait. November, October, November.
I know. I remember planning for all these.
I know.
So next, would it be appropriate for the council to say the next city council meeting that we, we bring this back so we can have future discussion with any other entity that might be also interested in? Yes, Miss McCallum?
In my opinion, I think it would be appropriate at this time to ask Mr. Ledbetter to engage them in conversation. I think that details would need to be worked out. I think we have some pretty constricted ideas of what we would like to see and how we want to see it run, and if, I think if they were interested and we were interested. But the only way to find out is to have Mr. Ledbetter engage them.
Pursue it further this time. And then bring it back.
Yeah. And then we can worry about planning later.
Okay, thank you.
And same thing if you were talking about with Gold Rush Days, because again, I know what Gold Rush Days has said is we need eight months planning time. That's what the Single Action Shooting Society says. They need to contact you eight months in advance.
Okay.
Actually, a year. You send out, save the dates before that.
Yeah, but that's not in a year. That is now in ten months. So we have two months in order to, if we want to do it to engage. So I'm just saying, we need to, we need to look. Again, in education, in education, we always look 12 months ahead. We need to look.
Then, thank you. And I just, I will have that discussion with that team. And I kind of see the EDC as, their work is very large, and, and these events are relatively small. So I don't want to be saying that they're committed to doing them, just so everybody is clear, but.
We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about it and see if it's something that we can work out.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we clarify that we are only asking Mr. Ledbetter to engage them in conversation at this time?
Correct.
Is that clarified? Is that clarified?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So if it's okay, I'll go ahead on 9:20 and, and we'll come back with that item on the agenda events.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. Alrighty, now we will go on to number eight, public comments. Public participation is welcome and invited by the city council meetings. Time is reserved for each city council, each, excuse me, each regular meeting for those in the audience who wish to address the city council. The city requests the persons addressing the council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane and disruptive remarks. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask questions of, yes, sir.
Point of order.
What do we skip something?
Office of Disaster Assistance, Mr. Richard Tillery. Are we scratching that from our?
Oh, he's online.
So we still have him before we go on to public comment.
Oh.
I apologize for interrupting you, sir.
For presentations?
Small, yes, small business.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't see him online. There we go. Thank you for clarifying that. Hello there.
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening, rather. My, my name is Rick Tillery. I'm with the S B A Office of Disaster Assistance. As you know, we are in town with the recovery efforts for the McKenna Fire. I have a very brief presentation that I can take questions if anybody has any. I'll just pop right into the, right into the question or into the presentation if that's okay.
Absolutely. Sorry, I didn't see that.
Not a problem. Standby.
Go ahead.
There we go. So as I said, I am with the Small Business Administration Disaster Assistance Office. We are a federal agency. And we come into communities after disaster has happened to help those in that community recover in the form of federally funded disaster loans. These are the primary source of recovery funds after disaster. FEMA does come in with presidential disasters, but we come in with both agency disasters like this one for the McKenna Fire and presidential. When I said that we we do disaster loans, these are to cover uninsured losses. So insurance will cover a certain amount, and then we come in and we can cover, help to cover what's not covered by insurance. So just for example, insurance may cover up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a structure, and then we can help cover an additional two hundred thousand above that. The most we can do per structure by law is $200,000 to repair damage to a primary residence. Homeowners and renters, both homeowners and renters are eligible to receive up to $40,000 in loans to replace the contents of their primary residence and a primary vehicle. And by primary vehicle, I mean the the vehicle that's used as a daily driver. It can't be like a sports car or an R V or something like that. Businesses and private nonprofits may receive up to $2 million in disaster loans to cover both physical and economic damage combined. And what economic damages, say, for example, just looking at Quigley's on California ninety six, they didn't suffer any physical damage, but they're still closed. And I I don't know when they're going to reopen. I have not heard from our folks that are working in our center there in Wairika. They will be able to apply for a disaster assistance loan for economic injury. And that's essentially what that is, is a working capital loan or a bridge loan to help get them through the rough patch and continue on until next season. But unlike a bridge loan or a working capital loan, it's not one big balloon payment at the end. It can be amortized over thirty years. Also, I'm hearing this is maybe applicable in the area that was hit by the fire. Short term rental properties can also apply for a business loan, as long as the income from that short term rental property is claimed on the applicant's tax returns. Now, these loans do require the borrowers to maintain an appropriate hazard like fire and flood insurance. Loans may not be used, like I said, for second homes, like vacation homes, boats, or any kind of recreational vehicles. The Small Business Act and additional disaster laws provoke, excuse me, provide S B A tools to make these disaster loans affordable. Low interest rates can be as low as 2.188% for homeowners and renters. And for businesses, it's 3.04%. And for private nonprofits, it's 1.875%. And again, like I said, these terms are up to thirty years on these loans. Now, only disaster losses not covered by insurance or other programs like FEMA grants, reimbursement by another party, or a settlement of a lawsuit are eligible. Applicants are not eligible if they have not complied with the terms of a previous S B A loan or other federal obligations, like you can also be declined for failure to maintain required insurance or not complying with federal income tax filing requirements. Also, nonpayment of court ordered child support, student loan, or federal taxes. Now, one of the big questions that we get a lot of time, a lot of times is, I don't have perfect credit, and that's okay. It has to be acceptable to our loan officers and case managers. There's no set spectrum or set window of what a credit a credit number has to be. One of the big things that we look at when we make the determination is, does this applicant have the ability to repay the loan? That's the big thing. And we do take collateral on any loan that is approved above $25,000. So one of the big things that we're really trying to focus on right now is mitigation. We are trying to recommend to borrowers to look towards the future when taking out these loans. And to that end, you can take an additional 20% on top of your loan to help fund mitigation efforts. And some examples of that, and I can't give specific examples or recommendations, but just general examples would be hardened roofs, like a steel roof, a firewise siding material. They make a kind of concrete siding material now, or it's made with concrete, I'm told. And this is a big one, creating a defensible space around the primary structure. That's something that that really is being focused on by us, by FEMA, by USDA, by the Forest Service. We're really trying to get that word out that creating defensible space around the structure can save your home or at least prevent loss of the home in a fire. And as I said, mitigation funds, in addition to the approved loan, are available. They may be up to 20% of the approved loan process. These are our contact information, the website and the numbers and the email address. We are at the Transit Center there in Wairika. We are open Monday through Friday from eight to five. We have staff members there who are helping people every day apply for these programs. I do need to to mention that we are not going to be open on Labor Day because it is a federal holiday. And I'm open to take any questions any anyone may may have.
Great. That's an awesome presentation. That's great, what you guys are doing. How how long are you going to be there as total, as far as extended period?
We don't have a close date yet. It, a lot of it depends on traffic. As long as people are coming in to the center to be helped on a consistent basis, I think we'll be able to justify being able to stay there. There are other disasters that are happening right now that we may need to evaluate staffing and and look to move folks. But as of right now, I'm I'm based in Medford for this event. I had a commitment earlier today, so I was not able to come down there in person, but I am able to come down and do briefings in person if if needed.
Thank you so much for that information. Is there, the council, have any questions for them?
I do one.
Yes.
Are you listed with all this information on the county website?
I have submitted the information to the county. I don't know if they have put it up yet.
Okay.
Perhaps, if I could, perhaps we could put a link on our city website.
Yeah, there you go.
For citizens who may have suffered a lot.
I have submitted electronically our fact sheet, which this is our fact sheet right here. Front and back, it's got basically every single thing that you need to know about about these loan programs. I've also submitted in electronically just some general pamphlets, educational type stuff to help answer any questions that might pop up.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you having me.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
Richard, right?
Rick, yes.
Do you work with our, our Siskiwe County Economic Development Council team just left? They also have an S B A component.
They do.
This is that they provide. Do you work with them as well?
I have been over to brief them. We we do try and work hand in hand with the local, and what it's called is the S B D C. It's the Small Business Development Center, and we do try and coordinate with them anytime we're in town for disaster. I actually don't live in Medford. I live in Denver. I'm just based here for this event. And anytime I come into a town, I always, one of my first stops is always the S B D C because they are an invaluable resource. And and actually, the the whole Economic Development Council you guys have is fantastic. That that presentation they just gave, especially the data numbers are incredible.
They do amazing work. Yes, Quentin down there.
Yes.
But Quentin, yeah, does the S B D C work down there. And he, I know he's contacted all the local businesses or most of them, I think, to talk to them about helping with other disasters, with other, you know, things that are going on, like our entire Main Street is in the process of being redone, and it's going to impact the local businesses. So I was just curious. So thank you for that information.
Absolutely. Quentin Gaddy's been fantastic. He is tied in with a lot of folks. And unfortunately, because of, I think it was called the Slater Fire, he he knows the process and we, it was very smooth to to come in and and chat with him and with Tanya as well to to help get our folks off and running on the ground there. And I know that our folks that are the, we call them disaster recovery specialists. They are doing what we call business outreach to individual businesses, not just in the Klamath River Valley, but also in Wairika because I'm told that Wairika was evacuated. There were several businesses that were shut just in Wairika proper that were shut down for a while. Those businesses are eligible for the economic injury disaster loans. Absolutely. And please don't hesitate to reach out if anyone has any further questions that pop up after this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to public comments since I missed that one. Is there any public comments at this point in time? Yes, come on up to the podium, speak from the podium, please state your name and address if you wish to do so.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Sanjay Agarwal. We be Mr. Mayor and council members. I have a very short presentation, which is in three parts. I'll go for the issue, details, and my prayer. First is the issue. California Civil Code and Landlord Tenant Act. There is some conflict about the court provisions. I request the council to review the landlord tenant act and confirm that it does not apply to hotel motel operations. The details. You will agree that hotel facilities are for the guest of our city as a guest at our, at our home, such as a people and transit, visiting the city of sitting for business conventions and meeting, et cetera. That is why we call them as our guests. The rooms we provide are called guest rooms. Therefore, it is clear that a guest is not a tenant of the facility. He or she, they are temporary and will go away when the purpose of the visit is accomplished. It is only under various government welfare and rehab programs that we kept the guests for longer terms. The agency took full responsibility for the guest's stay, any damage done to the property, and removing the guest on end of their stay. For many years, this corporation worked very well. Lately, due to lack of program funding, agencies just withdraw paying for the guest stay. Some guests continue to stay at their own cost, but did not leave when they failed to pay. They evoked tenant's right in error, and our law enforcement could not decide who's right. The guest is still staying without paying. My prayer is, the last part, in view of the above, I request honorable council members to uphold the purpose of temporary accommodation and not make it as a residential housing subject to this act. This will help us in continuing protection against such violators. Thank you. Any questions?
This is public comment, so we can't really answer anything like or ask anything. So thank you, though. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Good evening, council members. My name is Paul McModdy. I'm the owner of the budget in motel in the town. I do have some residential housing as well, and I'm a pharmacy manager for Reddy's Pharmacy. I'm also a colleague and a friend with Sanjay Agarwal. And we do a business in a, in a, with many different departments and programs, such as county programs, behavioral health services and tribe services that that provided. Recently, basically, funding has been gone, and there are people basically staying on our properties and not paying us. And basically, the law enforcement people, folks are not able to help us in because they have a not white and black description of easy to tenant rights or not. So I am going going through the eviction process, which I should not have gone in my opinion, because they are not the tenants of the of the motel. They are the guest of the motel. So we just are asking City of Wairika to look into this because if we cannot sustain this business model, basically, the mortals will be out of this business, and there will be more and more people on the streets, and that will not look good because when we are working on economic developments and when visitors are coming in town and see them on the main street and just walking around, I I don't think that really represent what the City of Wairika is. So that's the comment that if City can look into it, that would be great.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, can we just ask our staff to look into that and and maybe our chief as well?
Yeah, I think, I think he's on it. Yes, let's argue with the rest of the council. I think Jason's on it.
But I, I just wondered.
Officially.
In the record, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comments at this point in time? Move on to number ten, consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine, noncontroversial, and be enacted under one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval ratification of payments issued from August eighth, twenty twenty two through August twenty second, twenty twenty two. B, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on August sixteenth, twenty twenty two. C, continuation of emergency ordinance number eight sixty four fireworks. D, continuation of emergency resolution number twenty twenty one dash fifty one remote public here meetings. E, waive all, the full text reading of all ordinance on the agenda. Ordinance shall be introduced and adopted by title. Is there any questions from the council before we go any further? Certainly. Okay, I'm gonna open up to the audience and public. Is there any questions on the consent agenda before we move on? Okay, well, then now I'll open it up for a motion or whatever we want.
Mr. Mayor, Joan Smith Freeman, council member, I would like to make the recommended motion to approve the consent agenda.
You have a motion?
Debbie Baird, am I a second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll call Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Cory Middleton.
Aye.
Debbie Baird.
Aye.
And I, Duane K. Okay, we'll move on to number eleven, new business, planning director. Twenty twenty two, twenty thirty housing element draft revenue review, excuse me, session. This is Juliana.
Thank you. And actually, I also have Vanessa and Michelle on Zoom who are with Plan West Partners, who are our contractor who's been assisting us with the plan. So very excited. This is big. It's a lot of work. So this is a presentation of our draft housing element that we have prepared for you. This covers our twenty twenty two through twenty twenty thirty cycle six housing element update. We will be the first Siskiwe. Housing element update. We will be the first Siski County jurisdiction to get ours done and into HCD, which is really great, which HCD stands for the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And I just want to kind of back it up really quick and kind of talk about why this process is really important and I need input from the public. I need input from you and direction because this sets up. The entire kind of feel of the overall general plan comprehensive update because this is all happening at once. And so if we go to slide two. I wanted to break down, you know, why this is really important. You're all good. So you can click in. Your general plan is your strategic plan. I know we've been talking about that a lot, about different priorities that the council has, different priorities set by the city. But this general planning process is an, is an overarching long-term plan to be able to identify those priorities so that when we come to you. Each year, we can look at that plan and go, okay, we're going to focus on goals and programs and conservation and housing this year and we'll work through that. And the general plan is a statutory required document. So if you go to the, you, you'll have to click through the animations, Retta. So your general plan is the meaning doc, is the main guiding document. This has your guiding vision. And as we've talked about in previous sessions, your, unfortunately, your 2002 general plan has no vision. This is very rare, even for a plan that was done in 2002, because that guiding vision sets up. What we recommend for you. So we can say, yeah, we want growth, but what does that growth look like? Your vision sets that standard for you. And your vision sets you apart from other cities. So why is Shasta Lake City different from Waireka, different from Bakersfield? It's because they have set themselves up with principles, priorities and vision that they pick for their city. So after we're done with the housing element, we will be moving into the visioning process for 2044. Unfortunately, we had to get this element done ahead of time because we have statutory requirements that it is done and final by February 2023 at the latest. We don't like to push up against that just in case. So we're hoping to have this completed in December of this year. So there are other plans that stem off of this general plan. So if you keep clicking through Retta. We have our master plans, which is your infrastructure planning, your capital improvements plan, you know, are, do you need a new fire hall? Do you need a new police station? That is all talked about in your general plan. And finally, there's a third set of planning documents that we deal with that again, all trickle down from this general plan that we've talked about a little bit. Which is your implementation documents. So this is your zoning code update. This is your annual budget, which is actually considered a planning document. And this is your strategic or action plan. So we can have a subset every year, every two years. And base the budget off of your priorities and the actions that you want to take for the next two years. So it, it makes it much more seamless and fluid for a council to go through and set goals that have already been researched, determined over years and not follow a comprehensive vision. And so you can click through Retta. And so basically what we're trying to achieve today is we're trying to get a vision of what you want to do and then turn that into action. Because obviously I don't want this beautiful piece of paper to sit on a shelf. Planning is moving away from that for a long time. We were just excited to get the plan done and called it good. That's not good enough anymore. We're trying to actually move us incrementally forward into the future and that is really set by the general public, city council and planning commission. Through this general plan process. So just keeping that in mind, you know, I really do want input. This is the time to give it. This is a draft. It can change. And we'll go over that through the process. So I'll open it up now into specifically the housing element update and slide four. And I'll go to slide four, five as well. I'll let Vanessa and Michelle unmute themselves and introduce themselves from Plan West Partners.
Thank you. And what we can see on Zoom is not the same thing, I think, on your screen. So I don't know if there's a way. I can't tell where you are in the slideshow.
Oh, sure. We're on the introduction slide. And so Retta, if you go to the new, new share. There we go.
Okay, I'll introduce myself. Well, hopefully that will get figured out. So thank you for having us here virtually tonight with you. I am Vanessa Blodgett, principal planner. And partner with Plan West Partners and also with me tonight is Michelle Nielsen, a senior planner. And we have been working with Juliana and the city to. Develop the city's housing element, which is in front of you today, the draft. So what we will do today, we can go to the next slide, please. And. We really just want to provide you an overview and kind of orientation to what is in the housing, draft housing element right now. And the housing element is really a comprehensive statement of the city's current and projected future housing needs. And proposed actions to facilitate the provision of the housing to meet the needs of residents at all income levels. So we will kind of go into how we, all the data and different documents and information that we've compiled to. Look at what the housing needs are in the city and assess those. And then we will. Provide a overview of kind of the key aspects of our findings and what programs have been developed to. Address those needs or any, any other barriers to housing that have been identified through this process. And then we will briefly go into the next steps and the schedule. And then we're happy to answer any questions throughout the presentation or at the end. All right. Yes, next slide, please.
And if you don't have copies, we have some paper copies here. Would you guys like any or do you have? All right. Thank you, Vanessa. Go ahead.
All right. And next slide. So the, as the draft that is in your packet. Includes an introduction and really just talks briefly about the public participation process so far. Which I would like to thank Juliana and her staff and the public and planning commission who have provided input. To get us to this point has been really beneficial to the whole process. And so the introduction goes into that and then talks about a little bit about general plan consistency. Chapter two is the goals, policies and then action programs to, to. Implement, get to the goals, how the city will accomplish its goals. And then three is an analysis. Of the previous housing element programs and the city's progress in meeting those. And so that's the program part of the element. And then the appendices includes a lot of the data information. That was compiled and provides the basis of where the programs came from. So the needs assessment and Michelle will go into a little bit of that a little bit later in the presentation. Is appendix A. Appendix B is an assessment of fair housing, the affirmatively furthering fair housing AFFH analysis, which HCD calls it and is a newer state requirement. Appendix C is a housing sites inventory identifying the site that meets all of the state's requirements for providing low income housing and our. Housing that could be developed at the lower income ranges. And then appendix D is funding resources and appendix E is a glossary of the many, many terms that are in housing elements. Next slide, please. And I think this moves us into the housing needs assessment discussion. So I am going to turn it over to Michelle for this.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us. So yeah, just briefly, there's a lot of the needs assessment is probably one of the largest. Parts of the housing element and it does consist of a lot of data. Pulling that together from various sources, looking at population trends, household income, special needs. Housing characteristics, conditions, costs, constraints, governmental, non-governmental, and then also housing resources and opportunities. So tonight, just kind of giving a high level overview of all that data. So next slide, please. So this next slide, this first slide we're looking at here is what is existing housing unit mix in the city of Waireka and. About thirty, uh, two thirds of the housing stock is single family configurations. There is about 30% of multifamily. And then 5% is mobile homes, manufactured homes, but definitely mostly single family residents. Next slide, please. And so here we have the age of the housing units and this, this data is provided because. Sometimes as housing gets older, well, as folks may know, it, you know, maintenance is needed. There's the maintenance. Needs increase, which is cost. And then as probably a lot of folks are aware, just the cost of ma- maintaining a house, whether it's a rental house or a house you own. Has caught, I mean, those costs have increased dramatically in recent years. The materials, labor, the, across the board. But in this city, Juliana and her team, they're in the process of actually doing a housing condition survey. And they've worked through, I think, a little bit more than 10% of the housing stock. But what this data is showing that about 20% of the, the city's housing stock is more than 63 years old. And about 31% is 43 years old or more. And then. Almost 17% is newer, less is 33 years old. So that just speaks to that there might be some increased maintenance costs and if. If for folks that are on a fixed income, keeping up those homes, those, you know, roofs and siding repairs can, can be cost prohibitive for them. So they don't, they're not able to do that. Next slide, please. Some median income. This data, this is from federal data. So what this is showing is that approximately 17% of households in Waireka. Their household income is below, is less than 30% of the median income for Waireka. And the median income for a household of four is, you can sort of see it in that small print on the chart on the left, on the left is $42,483. And then for an individual, it's a bit more than $27,000. So with the, the data, the table on the right is showing that, break that down. By these different categories, you know, extremely low income, which is below 30%. You know, very low, what the percentage of households that are in those categories. There is a, there is a large percentage, 43% that's above moderate. That's earning 120% of the area me, meaning income or more. But on the, the other end, extreme, there is a fairly large percentage there as well. Next slide, please. And so what this slide is showing is employment by industry. This is, and the yellow highlighting is showing. That's just the notes, the slide. The highlight rows indicate industries where the median income is less than the upper limit for low income. Which is, which was shown on the previous slide, which is almost $34,000. So the yellow means that the median income for those. Employment categories are typically going to be. Low, low income. And so that then affects people's ability to, you know, pay for rent, pay for, you know, purchasing houses and whatnot. So that's what this is. Showing and as you probably all very keenly aware would tie into some of that earlier discussion from your economic development team. So this is kind of the, the economic sides of it from an employment standpoint. So. Uh, next slide, please. So housing costs, I know this has been very volatile and I'm sure is every, the council members well aware is housing cost. People are paying has been, has been increasing. But it. You know, interest rates have been going up, so it, it is definitely very volatile right now. And so what this is showing, that curve is showing that the Mia home value, according to this data from Zillow, has definitely increased. Starting in from, looks like this began December 2021 through the end of December 20, kind of makes a pretty steep incline. Which then gets to, you know, people's ability to afford housing, which is how many are they paying more than 30% of their household income towards housing, be it for rent or for mortgage payments? And the data for Waireka is that 39% of households in Waireka are paying 30% or more of their income. For their housing and for folks who, their low income, that number jumps up pretty significantly, significantly to 64%. Next slide, please. So what's the purchasing power for going back to the jobs? What is, what do you need to be able to? What income do you need to be able to afford a house, a typical house in Waireka? And income to afford that is shown on this slide is $110,000, which is. I think most of the positions, the median wage was below that. So it would take two incomes to purchase a median home price, home, medium priced home in Waireka. This assumes assumptions. Are 30-year fixed rate mortgage with an annual percentage rate of 5.5% and a down payment of 10%. So that's the assumptions that are built into that value of $110,000 to be able to afford a median priced home. Next slide, please. So I'm looking at. Needs, needs of populations in the, in the community. The number, the percentage of the Waireka senior population in, in the 65 to 74. Year age group increased pretty significantly from 2010 to 2019. It was a 18% increase in that age group. The age group of 75 and older didn't actually declined between that same year from. 802 individuals to 552. And why does this matter? It does indicate there may be a need for. Accommodation and homes, reasonable accommodation procedures. So people. Can, you know, have, be able to access their home and features of their home and be able to stay in their home longer. And then as far as disabilities, so the right-hand table. 19% of the total Waireka population reported having a disability. And as a percentage of the population, people 65 years and older have the highest percentage of disabilities at 39%. And by disabilities, that's referenced, that means sensory, physical, mental, self-care and independently living. And, and does not include folks who are living in institutionalized living arrangement. Next slide, please. So. We talked, briefly mentioned the housing sites inventory and evaluation of sites that are suitable, the. For this housing element cycle, the state projected housing element need was for Waireka and the Siski overall was fairly low at. Two housing units total that are. One for very low income and one unit for low income. The city from working with the planning director. The, and recognize, discussed in the housing element as there's was recognition that the need. For housing across the board, for all income levels, all, all kinds of folks in the community is definitely greater than two housing units. So in the. In the document, you will see a vacant residential land and been inventoried, just a category, categories, you know, listing of parcels that are vacant, zone presidential. And are available for residential development with, you know, through that. But then there's. Uh, next slide, please. There's state law for housing elements have a pretty stringent requirements regarding sites that are officially designated your housing, your housing. Housing site for your housing element inventory to meet what the state has projected to be your housing need. And, and with our research and working. Um to be your housing need and um and with our research um and working with Juliana. Um was there is a site that meets the state requirements and it's the site here. Um it's in very close proximity to services, it meets uh the state requirements for density. Size, proximity to services, it's available in terms of um it's, it's not developed. It doesn't necess- doesn't mean that that property owner, you know, that the the city is gonna go build that housing. That the property owner is gonna go build that housing, but it what it shows is that there's a site that meets the state requirements. Um for um the income category and it's available for development and so it's has that potential. So um that is, that's designated in the, in the um. Appendix C of the housing element, so um it's um. Yeah, but there's definitely other sites in the uh other locations in the city that are um. You can, the city can look at for um needs of the community and that's, there's programs for that, so. I uh I will hand it off to um Juliana, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So going into the key aspects of the housing programs, this is primarily looking at the items that we're recommending in chapter two. Which is the goals, policies and programs. So these were all informed based off of our stakeholder interviews that we did with a series of different employers. Housing industry individuals, which included brokers, realtors, banking industry. Um housing advocates, which included people who are with the homeless community. Um and working through those as well as community workshops, uh planning commission and obviously with city council. And so some of the main things that we identified from the public input that we were getting is that people are very focused on workforce level housing. Um people are less inclined to support low-income housing, which is why we wanted to do a really good job of focusing on the industries. That we currently have in the city that are actually considered low-income industries and that's a majority of our employment center. Um and then reframing that to workforce housing, um so making that a little bit more palatable for individuals who still support that programming. Um but you using different nomenclature. Uh the other one is aging in place, a lot of uh the stakeholder interviews that we had. Is that people are living longer in their homes uh and not necessarily moving into smaller units that are more manageable. One of the reasons we heard from a stakeholder was that there are no units that are single level. Um in the city of Wai Rika right now and the ones that are available are completely full and you can't get into them. Um other people are looking for ADA improvements on their existing home. And so that's something we took into consideration when cur- curating the programs and the goals that we have in there. Uh there are a range of programs, we tried to give a diversity of options for the city because again, we haven't established a vision yet, so I'm not honed in on a very specific set. But that doesn't mean we have to meet all of these programs. I think that's one thing that came up in planning commission is they said, do we have to achieve every program in eight years? No, you do not. Um you, you do have to show a good faith effort moving forward with a lot of the programs. And obviously, we want you to adopt programs that you're in favor of, we don't want you to do something you don't wanna do. Um that being said, we know that there are state mandates and what we did do was we went through the goals, policies and programs and any. Any of those you see with a bear next to it is a state mandated program, so we cannot take those out. So we tried to make it very clear that some of those are prescribed by the state, we have to have those in there, but the other ones that you not have that. Are able to be amended, they're able to be uh deleted uh with some reason, we do have to meet certain thresholds that aren't specific. But we do have to touch on some things, but we tried to do those range of programs and one of the other things we heard was getting a variety of housing types in the community. We do have a lot of single home, uh single-family homes, but as we saw from the data, that's not necessarily attainable for everyone that is in our community. And especially um seeing that the increase in population, we're seeing an increase in people who are eight to twelve years old, twenty-five to forty-five. And so you have to think about the situation those people are in when they're moving to our community, we're more likely to have debt coming out of college. Um some of our industries that we listed before do require a degree now, and so it's a good assumption that those people are gonna have a significant amount of debt. Uh coming into the housing market and may not have money in their bank for a ten percent down payment, I do not. Um as being one of those people, uh but the other thing we're looking at too is a range of programs around this new affirmatively furthering fair housing. Which AFFH, which you'll see that's in uh assessment appendix B, which that is a new requirement as of this year. So we had to quick scoot that in there to meet our mandates, um and that is centered around integration and segregation patterns within the city. And so to assess where those are geographically, um we take a look at four different characteristics, we look at race and ethnicity. Disability, income and familial status, and so that's what those maps are from. In a, in appendix B that moved back and we do have a couple of programs centered around those and those are required um per the state of California. Excuse me. And so uh again, going back to the other thing too, we talked about this at planning commission is we tried to put forward a series of programs. That institute housing on multiple levels, so we wanna have programs for the individual homeowner, we wanna have programs for the small-scale developer. All the way up to what we would consider called a master developer, so that would be like RCHC working on the Cisco um crossroads development. So master developers are typically those people who come in and do a fifty-plus unit, um we do have three interested at this time. Um moving forward from this conversation, so we tried to set up a number of programs to be able to support all the different levels of developer. That possibly could come into the city and then as Michelle was saying, we do have a significant number of aging housing. And so doing some rehabilitation and preservation programs is really important. Um because we can sit here and talk about building all this new housing, but if the rest of it is falling down, it doesn't really do us any good, does it? And so some key aspects is the housing needs is all updated with brand-new data, this is gonna be very good for some of our other programming that we have that we can rely on this. Um we took a look at constraints to housing and so we look at governmental, which is things that we can change, like your zoning code. And then non-governmental, which is like the cost to construct a home, so the cost of supplies and lumber, we really can't influence that and it is something we take into account. Um but we uh acknowledge that there is very little we can do about those certain aspects. Uh sites inventory, like I said before, is a key aspect of the update, keep moving forward, you might have had a repeat in some of the slides. Did you go to the next slide? And then as I said before, the affirmatively furthering fair housing and then the goals, policies and programs and we can go to the next slide as well. So a summary of the constraints that we found that were either talked about by our members of the public, things that Plan West noticed about our, our codes as well. Um they did also do a summary of all of the development impact fees, different fees that we have and that's in this document as well. A majority of our zone, uh our zoned land does not allow for multi-housing by rights, so even your high-density residential housing requires a conditional use permit. For units greater than four, um which is out of the ordinary, that's very restrictive and so that is a big deterrent for people wanting to do development. And so when people move forward, um they want to really control the time it takes to get through the process. Because time is the most restrictive resource that we have. Uh in a lot of cases, and we've heard this from some of our other stakeholders, that they will pay a premium to have a shorter timeframe. Um and they don't want to go to planning commission because that also could be a risk of them denying it. And that's something that a lot of developers do not want, they want assurances going in that they're gonna be able to build what they wanna build. And so that is a huge issue that we have right now with the zoning code and so you'll see within the programs, there's a number of zoning code programs. That will alleviate that constraint. There is limited var- variability in the types of existing housing. And so again, you know, having other unit styles, not even for incoming individuals who are younger, who may not afford a single-family home. But the type of family is changing in the United States generally, so again, people are moving back in with their parents. Or parents are moving in with their family members, uh people have parents who come in to offer childcare. And so those uh individuals are going to need a different style of housing than we've typically seen. And so you see a lot of people wanting to do the accessory dwelling units or the, the granny flat or cottage housing. Because it still is autonomous, so that individual can have their own space to live, but they're still on the property. Um being able to live within the vicinity of their family, we also did see a slight increase in large families, which are families with five individuals or more. And that is, that is a trend that we see, those typically have constrained uh funding amounts, uh household funding. And so they may not be able to afford an eight-bedroom house, but they have enough people for an eight-bedroom house. And so that can be for a number of different reasons, again, people taking care of those with a disability. We do have a slightly higher percentage in our population of households that are taken care of or have someone with a disability in their home. And that's something to think about too for the variety of housing types. So zoning limits your flexibility, it's probably one of the largest ones we've determined is, is the zoning code is the most restrictive piece here. We have a low vacancy rate, so right now we're sitting at about a seven percent vacancy rate for all of our units, you typically wanna sit around twenty percent. Eighteen to twenty percent is good, it means that people are moving in and out of your city easily. And it also means that people are moving up and down the types of housing easily, so again. You want a single individual to then get a larger house for their family, if that's what they choose to do, to then go back down once that family has left. Um the house, if that house is significantly bigger, and so you do kind of want this variety of housing types to allow that type of fluidity in and out of the city. Availability of information is really difficult, that even came up in our planning commission meeting, um landlords specifically too. That's one of the things that we might add as a program is a city-sponsored rental um posting site. Came up from one of our planning commissioners posting his unit for rent and said that he hadn't gotten anybody in a month, which is very strange. Um because we're seeing the rental units go very quickly and yeah, so he was asking about. Maybe it could be useful for landlords to have one central area to advertise their rental unit. Uh the other one is high cost of land and construction are obviously related to area, area median incomes uh comparison, so. Overall, in comparison to the rest of California, we are very, very low in cost and low in land value. But in relat- relative to our area median income, it's fairly high and you're gonna see that throughout the state. So we tried to take that into context because again, you know, we may be dealing with more of a regional issue around that cost. So we'll go to the next slide. So key topics provide additional support to housing programs and developers, uh we've even talked about, we had a suggestion doing a quarterly developer meeting. To make sure that we're uh giving out the most recent information on new requirements for developers. Um new programs going on and getting in, input from them, uh we need more housing types. And so again, looking at the cottage port housing, looking at townhouses, condos, things that are more manageable for everybody and fits their lifestyle need. Uh support for that workforce housing and then uh one of the big things that came out of all of this that I really wanna touch on is the opportunity for redevelopment. That came up in most of our workshops is we have a lot of vacant commercial land, why can't we convert that into housing? And so we are actually between this edit and the next one, we actually have already added a couple of goals and programs based off of the input we got during the thirty-day noticing period. And so we are looking to add and we already have it mentioned, but we're gonna beef up the adaptive reuse programming, so talking about different zoning. Ordinances and programs for commercial entities to repurpose their properties into housing or mixed use. Um which is commercial and housing units and then utilizing those vacant buildings. Cause as we know, new construction is much more expensive than existing construction, so reusing what we have is good. Um for cost, but it's also very sustainable, not providing any more uh materials. The other one is a hotel motel conversion program, these are becoming much more popular in more tourism-based destinations. Uh but we did hear from a num- number of the hotel uh motel owners that they would like the option to be able to convert all or some of their rooms into permanent housing. And so that has become much more popular nationally again, because it's reusing typically underutilizes space. And then uh I mentioned the city-sponsored rental site. Um the other thing we did note and you'll maybe uh catch in here is we do not have an issue with uh vacation rentals or second homeowners at this moment. Approximately two-point-four percent of our housing is uh recreational seasonal, um seasonally held. And so uh that's not necessarily an issue we need to address yet, so that's why you don't really see very many programs about that right now. Now, it's not that it couldn't become a program, if that does come to our attention and becomes an issue, not having it in here isn't going to stop you from doing that. We could have still addressed that issue. So moving on. So next slide. So again, going back over, uh we have a range of approaches, trying to reduce constraints to housing production, provide additional support. Update our regulations to meet state requirements, that's another big one, is we have not been updating our zoning code and development code to meet state standard. Which is not actually even a bad thing in this circumstance, for example, the accessory dwelling unit laws have changed to make it very easy for homeowners now to do accessory dwelling units. To the point where you do not have to build them to the current building code. A lot of people get very surprised about that, you build it to the age of the home that it's being built at or a minimum, I believe of the two thousand and six code. So you don't have to do fire sprinkler, um they did just change the law that you do have to do solar panels, but there are programs to subsidize that. Um but you do not have to do a lot of the modern um pieces to that for the ADU. Um that's a very attractive thing for people and it's, uh you also, uh we are by law not allowed to charge connection fees to accessory dwelling units. So if you add one to your single-family home, you do not pay connection fees and if it's under a certain square footage, you do not pay development impact fees or school fees. So it's a huge incentive to do that, um so hopefully updating all that, getting that information out is gonna be really big. Um identifying additional housing sites, we know that there's other infill properties that would be prime for development. Unfortunately, the state of California only needs us to claim one to build two units. Um so what we did do is we went in here and we are proposing a goal and program around providing at least two hundred workforce housing units in the next eight years. I think that's very realistic to what the need is, we heard from a lot of employers and so we have around three hundred to three hundred and fifty jobs right now. Um and that's not counting potential expansions that we've been meeting with other employers on. So I think that's a very realistic thing for us to attain and I think there's a lot of availability of internal space. Um think the large lots over here by the Shasta. Avenue Park, is that what it is? The Shasta Park over here, there's a large lot that's never been developed, that would be, already has utilities, it already has access. Would be a very easy housing site to accommodate. And then uh one of the things we did here is uh rezoning sites for higher-density residential uses. We've actually been contacted by a number of private property owners that they would like to go denser. Um specifically around the Green Horn Road area, a lot of those property owners would like to um go up in density. And then we've had interest from property owners up there who would like to annex and go denser as well. So one of the programs we're recommending is part of the general plan update, we will be sending mailers to all property owners within the city. Asking if they would like to go higher density to get an idea if there's a section or area that people are looking at where they would be more in favor of it. Um because I know that higher density is a little bit of a charged topic when we come to land use and zoning. So we're not committing, we're not committing anyone to anything, I'm just saying we will do due diligence and let people, you know, again, return the letter to us saying, yes, I would like to have this density. Um and these options for housing, cause that's what I'm hearing, but obviously they are not here saying that to you upfront. So trying to really go back and get that information is gonna be important. And then increasing maximum permitted residential densities, so right now we have a maximum density of sixteen units per acre and that's the highest we've gone. It's pretty low in terms of a high-density residential, um for a lot of land uses around that, we're seeing a lot of people basically double that. And again, we're not talking about sixteen unit per acre in your low-density areas. We're talking about concentrating that towards services, towards your transportation sector, we're talking about closer to your downtown core. And so that will all come out in the land use element and so that's not something we have to decide or need to decide tonight. And and like I said, a lot of the programs, we've, we've done them in a flexible way, so for example, one of the other ones that planning commission was curious about. Was doing an inclusionary zoning ordinance, which would require developments over a certain size to include a minimum uh percentage of affordable units. We just put in here to investigate the feasibility, we're not committing the city to doing that. Cause again, I tried to give you as many options to move forward because I don't know exactly what your vision is yet and we'll be able to kind of scale those as we go through. So we tried to balance that need um with what we were hearing, what we're seeing in the data and then what we would like to do moving forward. So next slide please. I'll hand it over to Vanessa and Michelle for just the closeout.
Great, thanks Juliana, um next slide please. And Juliana mentioned this, so we are taking the feedback and input that we've heard from the planning commission and other public outreach during the public review period. And we are incorporating that into a revised draft. And that revised draft will be submitted to HCD for a ninety-day review period. Um then we will get a letter back from HCD with comments and revisions and. Um we'll need to address those and once those are addressed, the housing will come back to the planning commission and then come back to the council for a final adoption. And I think that's the last slide, so now we can take any questions. Or I'm happy to listen to your feedback.
Council, yes, questions, comments, concerns?
I was trying to listen and keep up with.
Sorry, it's a lot, that's why we tried to give it to you for a whole month.
It is, um. I need you to explain a little bit about upzone. Was it upzoning? Hold on.
Yep.
That's right. Okay.
Yep.
What's upzoning?
Upzoning is increasing the density of a zone.
Okay. And if that is ever, that's what I thought. And if that is ever. Recommended for an area, do you send information to the neighborhood for their input before it's done?
So we have added that as a program for this element. We don't always have to do that per state law. So if we're upzoning a, I believe it's over five hundred parcels at one time, which is pretty rare. It's usually with a zoning code update. You do not by law have to send out individual notices if it's over five hundred units. Or so if we did a citywide zoning code, we technically do not have to, but we have added the program that we will as part of this process.
Thank you. And would you respond to the majority of the feedback?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, responding, I mean, I guess responding, I guess to be more specific. You know, if someone, so say, for example, you have a block of ten houses and eight out of the ten say, yeah, I'd like to do that. And two out of the ten say no. I mean, we will try to do our best to respect those two houses boundaries, but if their neighbors majority want to do that, we would go with the majority.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Don't have a problem with that. Boy, I am so sorry because I was listening. Explain what you mean by to allow buy right. Multi-family housing. What do you mean by the term buy right?
So yeah, there's three different types of uses. So there's prohibited uses, which can't be there. There's conditional uses which are there under very specific circumstances and have to go through additional permitting. And then buy right is basically when you set that zone, you say, this is what we want to see. So you are not required to do any additional permitting through my side.
Anything that people don't have time to wait for me to go through my notes on, I can contact you and ask questions on. It also on program HE dash one dash three dash six is talking about even the city has the option of building things. I really would not like the city to stick their neck out like that.
Which one is that? He one point three point six?
Yep.
That is article thirty four?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that is an optional piece and that has to go to the voters.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So article thirty four is basically the city has article thirty four is rent control, basically. And so the state of California does not allow rent control in the majority of the state, except for some select areas. And I believe Sacramento, San Francisco and somewhere else. That's kind of surprising. And basically article thirty four is another tool that the city could use, but the state has not allowed it. And so it has to be repealed by the voters. And so this is saying, and we can take this out if you would like, is that the city will support basically the overturn of that as an option as a, as a. Tool for them to use. So it would be a statewide vote. But it would basically be like, for example, when Joan goes to the League of California Cities. If we have a policy or program in here stating a policy stance like this, Joan would automatically go, this is what our general plan has said. This is what we've agreed upon. And so this is how we would like to advocate placing it back on the ballot.
So we still have a say in it?
Yes. People still, yeah.
Okay. This, the one before that AG one death one point three point five. The city may consider allocating collective funds to a local housing trust fund where the funds can be used to finance affordable housing development. So is that proposing that we ask additional fees from developers, homeowners? Whoever to establish this fund and use it at our discretion for. Financing of course, affordable. Housing developments?
Yes. And it's just to consider that. So we would prepare a feasibility report on if that is possible or not or favorable to the public. So it's not committing.
Is that asking to, when you talk additional funds, are we talking about using other funds also like grants for low income and things like that? It's not just asking, we're not asking taxpayers to foot the bill. We're not, we're not going to raise, we're not going to raise fees on.
You could. So what this is saying is that it's considering the adoption and preparing feasibility study for a housing impact fee ordinance. And it kind of explains what that could entail. And then also an inclusionary housing ordinance, like I'd stated, it does not commit you to adopting those. It just says that you will investigate it and you could choose not to do that as a priority as a council. But again, it's not a state mandated program. So if you'd like to take it out, that's okay.
I have concerns about that.
I do too. What concerns do you have about it?
Attacking on more fees to the developers?
Exactly.
It's not saying you're tacking on more fees, but with all due respect, it's saying that we reserve the right to do it if we need to do it. And if you have, let's say you, we had, let's say Amazon came in and said, we're going to put, we're going to put a warehouse in here. We're going to create a thousand jobs. Are we going to say no to that because we can't afford to put up the housing? Or are we going to say yes, and we're going to investigate it and maybe we have to tackle on some extra? And maybe we don't because there is money, there's lots of money out there and I'm going to address that at one point. I'll let you and I have a floor because there's money out there like crazy right now for housing. But are we going to turn away like a Walmart Red Bluff? Or, you know, or are we going to turn away an Amazon center because we don't want to tack on fees for apartments or something like that?
And again, this does not commit you to that. I will point out in the same program, it says for either option, the city will prepare background studies. The background studies will include an evaluation of the financial feasibility and resource requirements to implement either housing impact fee. Or an inclusionary housing ordinance, the feasibility analysis will also assess the impact of a fee or ordinance on the financial feasibility of a prototype rental project in Waireka. Similar to what a developer would do when considering how market rate housing. The financial feasibility study should include a pro forma analysis, a comparison of development costs and rental revenues. Of a prototype rental development to determine if the housing impact fee or inclusionary housing ordinance would affect the financial feasibility of a development. For either approach, the city may consider allocating, may consider allocating collected funds to a local housing trust where the funds can be used. So it's just saying you would do a report if you want to do it.
Okay, with during the report, when you refer to the city, are you saying you would follow the direction of the planning commission? If they chose to do that or the city council?
City council. Okay. Planning commission. So typically, hopefully, out of all of this is at the end of this, you'll have a general plan that we would basically sit down at the beginning of every year, every two years with the budget. And we would go, what are your priorities? And planning commission may have their own recommendations, which they're allowed to do for like land use and things like that. And they would say, well, we recommend working on these for these reasons. And you could consider all of them and say, yeah, that's great. Let's add those to what we would like to do. Or no, we think the city is going in a different direction. So at the end of the day, it does not require you to adopt these background fees. It doesn't even require you to do this in the next two years. It just gives you the option.
To investigate?
Yes.
And then make a decision.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. You could do the financial feasibility and find out it doesn't make sense.
On HE dash two one. Wait, HE two dash one, period one, period two. On the number one, it says the city shall provide density bonuses to home builders. Proposing to include qualifying dwelling units within residential developments. What, what would those units be? And how many is there a limit? Because if you're working in a residential development, I'd hate to see. Thirty unit apartment complex go up next door to me. I mean, that's not the field of the neighborhood I'd like to see develop. So what do you mean by qualifying dwelling units?
So this is a state required program, so we cannot alter this. But what it is, it's a good, it's a good learning experience. So this was the state density bonus law, which actually has been in effect for about five years now. And what it says is that a home builder, any home builder may choose to add a low income unit that meets the income qualifications. They need to de-restrict that unit for fifty five years at that rate. The rate can increase with inflation. And they can add, I believe, a plus one or plus two density to their unit. So if you're, if you're zoned for a maximum of four units, you could, you could go up to six.
On same section, number three at the bottom, you started a sentence and it's not, or that somebody did, and it's not finished within. And it's done there. At the very end, it says within.
Oh yeah, we did see that one and that is going into that. Thank you.
That is going to, what, what?
Yeah, we caught that and we gave the notes over to Michelle and Vanessa. That it's just a typo.
Oh, it's a cliffhanger.
Yeah. No, so I believe in Michelle and Vanessa state, the city will prepare and publish materials on the city's website informing property owners and housing developers. Of the city's density bonus program for qualified home developments. I believe this is state required to be within one year of the general plan housing element update is what it's supposed to say.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. But yeah, we'll definitely fix that cliffhanger that, but thank you for, thank you for catching that, Councilwoman.
Oh no, you're, this is, this is the time to do that. We actually, we went through and combed it again and it's like you stare at something for so long, you don't, and then you take a month off and then you see everything. So it is okay.
Oh, okay. So HE dash three point one point one. Oh, it's a state mandate. Never mind. I don't know if the rest of you guys noticed on the bottom of the page, develop a proactive code enforcement. Program that targets areas of concentrated rehab. Rehabilitation needs result in repairs and mitigation, potential cost displacement, relocation impacts on residents. Incentive, I hope that we incentivize rather than. When I found rather than. Grade by point system because I, I understand it was necessary. You had to do it for the report. But the housing condition survey was actually a physical walk. And a grading system for the conditions of the house, the windows, the paint, blah, blah, blah. And as a homeowner, it's. Offensive, hurtful when people have worked all their lives and somebody kinds of grades what they've done. So I know it's, I'm being oversensitive. You don't have to say.
No, no, I'm just asking, can you repeat that? I guess I'm not, I guess I'm not hearing. I don't think I'm hearing what you're getting, what you're saying. Other than it's offensive when we look.
Yeah, sure. So I think what Councilmember Barrett is trying to convey is that we do need to be sensitive when we're doing code enforcement around. Homes that do not score well on the housing condition survey. And so for example, if we've ranked a house, say four, which is near dilapidation, five is not livable. You should not be living there. But if we like rank someone of four, trying to be sensitive about that and not necessarily go in full enforcement, but also offer them programs on how to fix that.
Yeah, but shouldn't we? I mean, we got three kids in that house. Do we owe it to the parent to like tiptoe or do we owe it to the kids to make sure we get them out of a house that's maybe got no water, no electricity? Or feces and urine that doesn't flush down a toilet?
And I think that's, I, you know, I don't want. Extreme example. I think the example that Councilmember Baird, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, say, for example, someone has. So I saw this on my housing condition survey, which isn't done yet, like a carport that the roof is caving in. Or I can see that they haven't redone their roof in a number of years and it needs to be redone. That will bring down their housing conditions score. And for like certain small pieces like that, you know, it could be a person who's on a fixed income, who hasn't been able to, you know, fix it yet. Being sensitive to those people and making sure that we're not going in full enforcement. And then instead going in with, hey, there's a rehabilitation program available. Do you need assistance applying for it or would you be interested in it? And trying to balance out the kind of the carrot and the stick approach.
In my, in my four years on the council, that's the way it's been done. But so we're, so this wording will be looking at changing it is what you're worried about. We've always placed the carrot out there. We've always tried to work with people. We've tried to haul trash away. We've tried to go in and help them. Whether with whatever it is, it's typically doesn't have, you know, typically as we've not gone in and said, God, your place looks like crap. We, you know, you either clean it up or, yeah, we're going to come to the bulldozer and, you know, flush it down the toilet. We, it's not, it hasn't been how Willow has worked. It hasn't been how anybody has worked in, I don't know, unless I'm missing something.
Well, we really, we really haven't had a code enforcement in the past either. It's still recently really that, that would really enforce something though too.
Well, we've got code enforcement for three or the four years I've been on council.
I know, that's what I'm saying. It wasn't until recently.
Because I worked with her to go out and help people move stuff. So I mean, I'm, that's why I'm questioning it.
I think going back, I think it's just more of the language that's used in the draft and this is state mandated language. And this is around actually some new regulations around displacement and relocation too. So landlords now, if you do have, well, this was true before, but if someone comes in with a housing project that's going to get rid of several low income homes. They have to pay for the displacement and relocation of those people now. And so it's a lot of strong language around that. And this is just state mandated. And so I think what Councilmember Baird is trying to project or convey is exactly what you're saying. Is we want to make sure it's balanced how we've always been doing it and we don't want that to change with this language.
Yeah, I've always thought we've been over backwards to the tenant or the homeowner. I, to the, to the detriment of neighbors. And I mean, from what neighbors have told me on, on, on the ones that, you know, when they call and complain to me, including ones that are calling and complaining right now, we're one we're working on. You know, it's, I think we've been over backwards. You know, when we get people, when we get people a year, year and a half, two years, four years, I think that's way, way out of line.
We're really.
Or six years.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, I, I just don't see. What's that?
That's still not what I'm talking about.
But then I am not understanding. I apologize.
I'm not talking about the extremes. I'm, I'm concerned about the people who are on fixed incomes that can't maintain their home at the level that the city thinks they should. Because they're on a grading system.
Well, each of these homes I'm talking about are, are, they're on fixed incomes and they haven't maintained their homes. I mean, so, and as I'm saying, I think we've been over backwards for them. So.
Oh, yeah. I think we're, we're.
I guess I'm agreeing with you.
Or two different ways of looking at it.
Yeah, I guess I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, you, basically you guys are agreeing on the same thing. So.
The rest of the stuff I'll have to review to see if it's state mandated where written everything. I don't want to take up everybody's time. I apologize. Thank you. I yield a little bit of questions.
I knew that was going to come up. So I tried to make sure when we were doing this that it was like, we cannot change some of these. I wish we could, but we, we do not have that power.
A lot of, a lot of this stuff, it's, it's, sorry, council, but a lot of the, the mandates have come because when the market was good. A lot of these developers were, when I was in Sacramento, were buying up all these low income apartment housing and taking them out and building these nice logs. And they had nowhere to go. And so now this is where we're at, saying you have to put them somewhere. And the one where you're saying, you know, about a thirty unit complex by multi million dollar houses, if you go to Sacramento, they're required to build apartment housing. For affordable incomes. And so, yeah, there's going to be an apartment complex that's really nice, but they're going to be income based because that builder that's building these eighty five or a hundred, five hundred, you know, homes. That are seven, eight hundred million dollars has to do that. So there is. Affordable legal opportunity for housing.
Especially in certain zones.
Yeah.
That's, that's, you know, look at.
It's a certain builder, the developer base, you know, he goes off build these and going to have to build these. Yep. The city's saying you have to build these. The state is saying you have to build these. That's interesting. Some cities get impact these.
Right, it should have. So for that, because you can't have, you know, get a high. Be nice if we did get all this high income coming into Waireka, but it's not an actual thing at this point in time. But if you were to take away all affordable housing and just build up all these nice homes, then no one could afford to live in.
Exactly.
Just based off of the income that study that we just seen. Also, this income and then aging in place properly, then now we've eliminated any housing. Like you said, if you have all this upscale housing that moves in here, nothing else for the low income, then we've eliminated all that. Some of the state mandate is, is good.
Yes, but we can expand our city boundaries. So.
Whatever comment I have, but I don't have any questions and I'll yield to somebody else to go over because I don't have any other questions. But I think the hundred and ten thousand dollar income, I think that's a little bit out of whack. Because I'm in the real estate and it doesn't take somebody a hundred and ten thousand dollars to buy a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house here. Because I just sold one and he did not make that at all. So I guess it depends on debt. So it's a little misconceiving to say you need to make this. I think it depends on debt and everything because they didn't make near that and they bought this hundred fifty thousand dollar house that was way under that.
And Michelle kind of pointed that out. It's such a volatile market right now.
People just think, oh, well, I'll turn up for that because I want to make a hundred and ten thousand dollars here. That's a little bit inaccurate. So.
Especially, especially this day and age, you know, the housing that you're going to buy in Waireka is, you know, eighteen hundred square foot house is going to be three hundred fifty thousand dollars. eighteen hundred square foot house is gonna be three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I just to chime in, um, especially I remember being in Napa and you know, during the, uh, the, the last housing market crash. And people were certainly buying homes and getting approved for loans. But I think in this document, it also said that there is a percentage of your income being spent on that home, which puts you at a huge disadvantage. So I think that's more of um probably the correct amount of money to be making with ten percent down, you know?
You have to make that.
True, yeah.
It just looks a little deceiving.
Yeah, so again, going back to housing burden is defined if you're spending uh thirty percent or more of your income on housing alone. And so that's, I think, what we're more concerned about and that becomes an economic issue. You know, the less money that you have, that's disposable income, the less you're spending in the economy. And so that's gonna be a bigger thing, you know, it all comes around and all impacts each other is how we're taking care of that housing. And um, you know, I, I talked at the LTC the other day about inflation and the big costs for people and outside of housing is transportation. And so, you know, if we're trying to encourage economic development in the city, we need to figure out, okay, how do we get people more money? Either we raise the minimum wage or we cut costs or, I mean, we're doing it right now with the city budget. You know, you think of all these different ways to raise revenue, cut costs. Um, and it's the same for household and trying to do that. So.
And you said thirty percent. I know in New York, when they're looking at it, because my daughter works in real estate for, just for apartments and things like that. They consider you're gonna pay, they, they, you're gonna pay minimum of forty to forty-five percent of, they look at your income and they want to make sure that your debt income is so that you can have forty to forty-five percent to pay, make your, your house payment or your rent payment. So. Court, uh, uh, Councilman Middleton, the, the, the figure of ten percent was put out there. Is it still three percent for an FHA minimum? It used to be. Three and a half percent? Okay, so somebody could get in with a three and a half percent on an FHA if they qualify.
Or USDA.
Or.
Yeah.
Or VA. Okay.
USDA.
Okay.
Yeah, that, those would be the other programs that we could do. Yeah.
Thank you.
This is assuming that someone does not use those programs.
Yeah. Low, yeah. Thanks.
A lot of people don't understand that. They say, oh, gosh, no one's ever gonna make that in Wairika, a hundred and ten thousand, they'll never be able to buy a house. That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
And that's what people listening would hear or sitting out here.
Yeah.
But thank you. Amen. No other questions for me. Thank you, guys. Or let me interrupt.
Yeah. Um, in the interest of, uh, we're, we're, in, in the interest of the fact that there's lots of money flowing out there for moderate housing, I don't want to say low income, moderate housing, affordable housing, I would like to hope that the city will bear in mind that we need to drive this truck and we don't want to be dragged behind the rear wheels. And um, there's money out there that the city partners with, with organizations that we can get that money to build moderate housing within the city would be higher density housing, sixteen units probably or, or more. But I was up and looked at this um apartment complex up by um Sierra Vista and I mean, it's such a small footprint. I, I was looking online, you can look and they, they put, every week they put out a a drone shot of it, of what they've done. And um, it's on YouTube and then I drove it and I've said this at our last meeting, it's such a small footprint to put in fifty units and it's, it's something that I think we need to be able to do. That being said, for developmentally delayed adults, there is little to no housing in wired city Wairika. And a big reason for that is because we have a NIMBY mentality. We don't want developmentally delayed adults around our neighborhood. Uh, as, as a thirty year educator and my wife thirty-seven years, uh, who have dealt with between two of us sixty-seven years with developmentally delayed kids and I have a Down Center nephew who's in his forties. I hope that that will be part of the definition of disability, that disability will not just be somebody who's in a wheelchair or somebody who's been, you know, a veteran that's been disabled. And I mean, just, you know, I mean, thirty or forty percent, I'm not saying that they shouldn't be, but that has been disabled or somebody who uh, you know, falls in a regional center, but really isn't developmentally delayed. I mean, group homes and things like that, I think are very important. And, you know, of course, for me, I have no problem having one in my neighborhood, but I know a lot of people are very, very uncomfortable with them because they think that these people quote, are gonna, you know, whatever in the neighborhood. I, I don't know what they think they're gonna do, but so does that include?
Hmm, yeah, actually co- cognitive disability is part of that overall definition. So I think last time we had presented, there were two different slides talking about disability. One was associated with the point in time count and those definitions differ. We follow the, the state's definition, which does include people with developmental disabilities. Um, I believe we broke it down by, I know sensory is the most common in the city. Um, but it's also people who have a difficulty living independently, which can be a very large overarching disability. It can be anyone who suffers from fainting spells, seizures, narcolepsy, and so that is encompassed within the, the definition of disability.
What do they, what do they define cognitive? Cause sensory is a very, very broad term and from an educational standpoint, it really means to us zero. Uh, you know, we can't qualify necessarily a child uh based on just sensory. That's.
And I don't know if Michelle or Vanessa, you have that definition and it's just from the state.
Oh, NIMBY is not in my backyard, if anybody didn't know it. Nobody wants anything in their backyard. They don't want a dump. They don't want a group home. They don't want a low income housing. Electric lines.
So uh, through the chair, um, so the definitions, um, the data is taken from uh state and federal sources that um, how they I don't think the glossary has a specific de- definition. I think there may be a specific de- a definition in the data source, the American Community Survey and the census, which are very linked. Um, but it's pretty broad. They, they, um, I presume, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not, I'm a doctor, but um, it seemed to be capture um, a lot of um conditions. Um, but if it would be helpful, I could work with Juliana to provide that information. Um,
Yeah, I'd love that we can add it to the glossary and define that. We can send that to you ahead of time, but uh, what we have is uh, from that American Community Survey is twenty-five year estimate. Sorry, I have a weird hand cramp right now. So my hands being weird. Um, people with hearing vision difficulties, cognitive difficulty, ambulatory difficulty, self-care difficulty and um, independent living difficulty. So those are the five that we consider under the umbrella of disability, but we can definitely um, parse that out as best we can by definition. Um, and just to kind of go back to your um, original thought process, we did install program H E six point one point two, which commits the city to undertaking a review and initiating any needed updates on the zoning code um, to add those pieces. Inclusionary language that offers reasonable accommodation ext- uh, and extends and applies to city parking regulations. Inclusionary language that provides uh housing for persons with disabilities may request reasonable accommodation and developing and marketing the availability of the procedures on a regular basis. So it's um, you know, it's trying to cover a number of programs to be able to support that. But going back to like an inclusionary zoning code ordinance, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily be affordable linked. We could trial a couple of other uh zoning ordinances that could require, you know, someone who's doing a fifty unit to at least provide at minimum three or four or up to whatever threshold the council and planning commission determine um, some of those units. And the other thing, too, is we could focus more on going for the veteran housing. Um, there are a lot of dollars in veteran, veteran housing as well. Um, I think it should be noted, we do have actually a fairly large young population with disabilities as well. And so being able to meet them would be a good thing to keep in mind as we move forward.
And then my last thing, it's, it shows uh, whatever we're calling it now, Brookdale or what's it called?
It's currently called Siski Springs.
Siski Springs as low income. Um, I know when my mom was there, we paid fifty, five hundred a month. That wasn't low income. So.
We can check in on that. I think the Siski Springs one.
No, I mean, we were, yeah, we, four boys pooled our money to put her there.
Yeah.
So I just thought.
A, what it may be is that it may have a mixture of units, but we can also double check because again, um, the assisted multifamily units that we have do have very strict standards associated with them for these programs. So if they are violating those standards, we do need to know.
Okay.
And which one was that? The Emerald Point? Sorry, Siski Springs.
Springs, I think. It's had four names.
I think it's Siski Springs. Now they've changed names.
Was it previously the Emerald Point one, though?
No.
No?
Yeah, Brookdale. Brookdale and something else.
Okay.
Don't worry, she.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith Freeman.
Yeah, we have a, we have all of the ones that are linked to HUD programming on A sixty. And so the one we are concerned about, and I have not gotten any information from the management, is that the Deer Creek Apartments expire in twenty twenty-three, um, which is very, very bad. Um, because we are held to that standard. We have to, we have to maintain those thirty-five uh affordable units. And so we're trying to make contact with property owner and management to make sure that they either reapply for funding or they will be required to replace these units at their cost. So either they're building a new housing unit or they're applying for this program. Um, and then typically the city is held enforcement wise to make sure that that happens. So that's the one that's at risk right now. Everyone else is uh projected out to uh at least twenty thirty-seven or later. And I do have to say, the uh Shadow Gardens Apartments actually just reapplied for funding to redo all of the exterior of their apartments. Yeah.
That's the one up minor.
Yeah, it's a, no, it's over here off of, yes, thank you, Turk.
Very, oh.
Thank you.
The only thing that I would say this year here. Uh, this, this is a tremendous amount of work, like to compliment you and the team.
Yes.
Uh, for all the work that's gone into it, but it looks to me like there's a lot more work to be done. Um, it looks like that the state mandates that we were just talking about, about, you know, the importance of setting up the uh state density bonus. Another one about having our own plan for the, what was it? The F, here it is, AFFH plan. The city will develop an AFFH plan that's taken to action to address significant disparities in housing needs and in excess of option. There's a lot more work to be done on this. So I, I assume that this is ongoing.
Yes.
I'm not sure what the date is. You have to have this done. Do you have to have your AFFH plan done at the time that this is adopted?
What was the number again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on pitch two dash eight. It's goal H E three, one dash one or one point one.
I think there's a timing section under each one and this one is within twenty-four months of adoption.
Yes.
It looks like there will be a significant amount of work in addition.
Yes. And there's a whole general plan due. Um, so yeah, no, it's gonna be fun. It's job security.
Yeah.
Job security, it is, it is. That's for sure.
Anyway, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
We do have to open this up for public.
Public comments.
We'll open it up for public comments at this point in time. Look, I got a mic right in front of you. Perfect. You're on? Nope. It's like a double switch, isn't it? See, I just want to use Paul's mic. Oh, there it is. Got it.
Yeah, sorry.
Good job.
Okay, so my question is, um, correct me if I'm wrong, apartment buildings like George Harris apartment building right now on the um and pine street. I know it's probably named differently, but all of the apartments, buildings that exist right now with this new state mandated law, can they add to them? Like George Harris, can he put four more apartment buildings up? Four more units?
It depends. I don't have their zoning code in front of me. So what'll happen is, so like, nothing in this housing element will allow anyone overnight to do that. So what we would have to consider is what is their zoning code say? What is their allowable maximum density? Um, you know, and then what is the reality of them building? You know, we'd have to take a look at how much open land that they have. You're not gonna see a lot of people redevelop where they're gonna want more housing like that unless they're going to level the entire thing and rebuild, which is a lower um, there's a lower possibility of that happening here just with the cost of construction. Um, they could potentially, but again, I'd have to take a look at their zoning and see what they're allowed to do.
Okay. And um, I mean, we really need housing. We have a housing horrible problem. So up there behind Juniper apartment places, that's perfect. Um, that would be something that the city really needs to look into. And I know that you guys say we can't build houses. The city can't build houses. The city partners with people and they can too build house and they need to do. We have an extreme need. You know, Cal, uh, North Cal really wants to expand, but where are they gonna put the employees? You know, we already have such, there's people out there homeless who have jobs, have money, cannot find houses. So we really need that. Please.
Thank you, Don.
And like.
They live in a home and they have three units behind the hall that they rent and have rented for six years. How is that person, if they want to face that, how are they able to see if they have a room?
Yeah, so what we have been encouraging everyone to do is set up a pre-application meeting with us at the city. And so it's myself, Matt Bray, um, James McIntyre, our uh building official and Jerry, if he's available, because he's super busy. Um, we appreciate him when he does come. Uh, and we basically go over what they'd like to do or if they're inquiring and then we make sure multiple things is the zoning, we got to make sure that the infrastructure there has no issues. Um, for example, they may need to size up their, their water lines. So they need to know that if they're doing that. And so we just encourage people to ask us on a case by case basis. That's the easiest to do it right now. Um, hopefully in the future, we would be able to target specific properties. So for example, we'd probably focus on vacant land first and, or super underutilized, as we would say. And we would basically contact those individuals first and go, you know, there are grants available. Would you be interested in partnering with the city to do that? And so we would start there, but it's always open to anyone who would like to do that. We're getting more interest, like I said, in the ADUs, which is exciting. Um, because it's very doable for people and uh hopefully that can expand in the future. Yep.
I, I have a question for the council. This is Jason, this Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. And so as, as Juliana has gone through the general plan and there's a lot of public outreach. And individually, we've kind of talked individually. Um, I just want to know, and I know this is putting everyone on the spot. Uh, are we growing or are we not growing? What is the vision that the council has? Because just as the EDC was here earlier tonight, we don't want to work on projects that aren't maybe supported by the council. And so that would be very helpful for me to understand the vision that this council has. If they were to say ten years from now, what is it that they want to see? It's perfectly acceptable to say you don't want to see growth. You're not gonna break my heart. But it would help us, then we would go and we would start working on things that were infill projects or different projects that could happen with different funding sources. But I guess I want to know from the council, is there a number, a population number that you would strive to hit in a certain amount of time? Is there a number that's too big? Are you satisfied with seventy-eight hundred people? What is it that you want to see for population in the next ten years in the city of Wairika?
Good point, good point, Jason. Thank you for bringing that up. Cause we need to give you guys direction on something like that. And I think, why don't we just go around the room and Jones.
It's, actually, this is something that I've given a lot of, of thought uh, too. And as you know, I sit on the. uh, too, and as you know, I sit on the um, the state board for Cal Cities, League of California Cities, and I look around at the size of the cities and of course, most of them sitting at the table are quite a bit larger than we are. But when I look at our city and I look at what they're, as you mentioned, there's over three hundred jobs out there. And we have other businesses that are looking to come in, as, as Don Murray was talking about. And uh, the casino is hiring. They've been having uh job pairs. I do believe our city is growing. I don't think that our housing element is keeping up with it and that worries me. I think anything that we can do to create housing and as um Juliana talked about, the work, the workforce housing, I think is really important and the affordability. I'm thinking the magic number for me in the next few years, I'm hoping within the next five years, maybe sooner, would be ten thousand. We're at seventy-eight hundred now. I think that we could easily hit ten thousand if we have the housing, if we have the jobs and the businesses here. I believe that ten thousand, I think ten thousand is the breaking point for us where we really need to provide the infrastructure. And uh, I believe that the important thing would be to start building that infrastructure now so that we're ready for those ten thousand people, because I think it's coming. I mean, we've got Arby's that's opening within the next few months. They're hiring people as well. I'm real excited about that. So um, so ten thousand, um, and then I'm thinking uh, once we get to ten thousand, I think we'll get to fifteen thousand pretty quickly. I don't think that Waireka will ever be a, you know, hundred thousand person town, but I do think that we'll make fifteen to twenty thousand at some point, maybe twenty, twenty years down the road.
Thank you.
My vision.
Yeah.
Of course, I won't be.
Oh, I'm just gonna go right around.
No, I actually pretty much agree to that. I'd like controlled growth, not control to stop it, control to determine how it grows. Uh, I don't want an imbalance of one economic group over another. I want to see balance.
Right.
I'm gonna see business and industrial as well. I'd love to see us focus a lot more on developing our industrial out on Phillipin Lane. But yeah, I agree with that, but I, I don't wanna stop at ten. I think that would be the minimum. I'd like to see more than that.
Oh, I agree. I think it'll grow past that, but that's, I think that's within the next few years.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go around the room, so all this way on my part. Um, I totally agree within the next five years, I'd like to see within ten thousand. I'd like to see within the next twenty years, double population myself, um, from seventy-eight to, you know, fifteen to sixteen thousand possible. Um, and I think, I think we're cap, I think we're capable of doing it. I think as long as we have the housing and that goes back to it, the uh, looking at the numbers on the housing development at certain timeframes, um, there's a higher percentage. I don't know if the studies how accurate that is, but um, in the, in the growth of the seventies, um, seventies and, and early eighties, we seen the camel tracks, we seen up by the old radio station. There was hundreds of houses that were put in at that point in time, so I don't know if that, that numbers are quite accurate is what I know from the past experience living here. That we seen those developments go in, especially the Campbell Tracks area and up above on like Turri Street and up above that area, those were all developed about the same time. They're the same exact housing. And it was back in the seventies and early eighties, that was all developed and stuff, so that was those housing and development, that's what I would like to see more um, of that type of housing development, because those now, those houses, you know, back in two thousand eight, when the housing crunch came and everybody's, you know, selling everything and getting rid of stuff and couldn't afford to build and whatnot. You could buy one of those houses at the Camel Tracks for about fifty thousand dollars. And Corey could, I remember those days, well, you, well, you were back here at that time? Yeah, so.
They were sixty-five thousand.
Yeah. And, yep. And now those same houses were going, they're going for about two and a half. Two, well, low two is two and a half, aren't they?
Well, I sold them, just sold them on Meadowlark and those homes were going for eighty-two back in, like, two thousand. I sold them for two sixty-nine on Meadowlark.
Meadowlark, by the same area.
That's amazing. And so I look at that and those are houses that we're looking at, like possibly around fifteen hundred square foot housing. That's, that's what we need for the workforce around this Waireka area. If we wanna develop land or develop Waireka with the workforce, we need to have moderate homes that are around fifteen hundred square feet, not homes that are three, thirty-five hundred square feet, not homes that are nine hundred square feet, but we need moderate homes. And I, I haven't had one of those too, so I'm not gonna say anything. Our house on Third Street was nine hundred square feet, so I know exactly what that is. But uh, I think that's, that's my vision to be able to now getting back to the infrastructure, that's a crucial part because, you know, yeah, being able to develop houses is one thing, but infrastructure, supporting that, obviously, water is number one. You can, you can up the sewer and all that stuff very easily, but we only have so much water consumption that we're gonna be able to, you know, bring in unless we start finding other water sources. So that's gonna be the key thing on any development.
That's actually a really good segue into some of the other pieces of the general plan and actually, I think we talked about this or I talked to someone about this recently. That is something we can control for, you know, going back to controlled growth. And I understand people get very touchy about development standards and adding more to developers, but if we are concerned about water scarcity, that is something that we can implement either through retrofitting programs for existing homes. We could do gray water systems, rainwater systems within the law of California. I know it's a little nuanced here with water rights. I'm not from the states with water rights, so it's different. Um, but that is something that we can take into account with new building. You know, yes, the building code does afford for certain pieces, but we could require certain developments, you know, to have additional, you know, irrigation filtration, cisterns to co- collect that irrigation and self-circulate. So there are other regulations that we can put in place that could, you know, take that into account as well. And so that'll be something we start to talk about as we move into the other elements, like the conservation element is water resources and how do we move forward with that? And there are gonna be a lot of drought grants going out there, so this is a very good time to talk about this so that we can start working with homeowners. So when we do approach the homeowner who has a broken window and maybe needs some new paint and go, we also have this irrigation system, um, self-circulating, we also have grants for ziriscaping to take out your grass if you want that option. You know, that doesn't fit well with everybody, but having those options available, I think, is the important thing we're trying to do here. And so we can control for that as we move forward. So growth can occur when you do have some of those constraints.
That's a good point, yeah, to be able to adjust for future like that. You know, it's like right now, I know a couple houses that are being built that are around that fifteen, sixteen hundred square foot marker and they're going for about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, so that's, that's a tough one for anybody to be able to afford that's getting in, a young couple that's, you know, trying to make it in this world and doesn't have a great job around Waireka area, so affordable housing is a tough one. Because that's, that's, with the state of California and some of the mandates, it's pretty tough to achieve affordable housing, so. That's, I'd like to see, I'd like to see if in the next twenty years, double in size myself, but Corey, move on to you, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Um, well, everybody knows my answer's going to be is
You're the expert. Some of those houses.
It's not only that, I'd like to see more business come back, like I, you know, remember as a kid and um just growing, but of course, growing's gonna have to take risks, growing's gonna have to take uncomfortable situations where the city has to raise fees. I mean, it all comes, growth has to come with some of these tough decisions that we're bucking against. And that's, you know, when we talk about growth, there's gonna come some hard decisions that we're gonna have to face here. So yes, we're gonna have to grow, but yes, we're gonna have to make hard decisions sitting here and that's what we're hired to do, like Paul said, is we can't sit here and keep going back to nineteen seventy-eight and say, oh gosh, we have to stick with that fee, you know? Gotta stay with that nineteen seventy-four fee because we're in rain nineteen seventy-four in Waireka. So to move forward, we have to move with the times and with growth, I would like to see our growth, and I agree with everybody, within ten to fifteen years, I'd like to see it ten to fifteen thousand people. And I didn't get there and I think hopefully we have, you know, by then, water to sustain that type of growth. I know our town doubles, I think, during the day when everybody comes in here to work and
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, from other cities and so our water production doubles during the weekdays when everybody's here using it, so. Um, yeah, I'm all about growth and seeing just in those possibilities. I think they're there. I think they're coming. You know, we're seeing great and I think Main Street's gonna be a kickoff to a great thing for Waireka and many businesses that are coming. I think they have a sign out there off that. I don't know if it's, I think it's forty acres now, because they took a little bit for Arby's, but they have a sign saying up to forty acres development, so they're searching for other tenants and businesses to occupy those paths. So they're searching, so I think there's great things to come, but again, there's gonna be hard decisions we have to make for us to get there. Some, some are right in front of us that are a no-brainer, like grants and the city can throw at us. And some of us are, it's gonna be on us to have to make those hard decisions for growth, but um, and but we'll, we, we need to do it for the future of our city and I, as long as I've been here, I'll fight for growth. But I'm not saying at any cost, but by all means, not, not saying that, but there is gonna have to be a little bit of adjustment here and there to make it happen.
Mr. McCoy.
As a flatlander and only having lived here thirty-six, thirty, actually thirty-seven years uh this weekend. Um, and coming from a huge town in Southern California of twenty-two hundred people, much smaller than here, even though when, in the, the whole time I've been here, I've had people say, don't bring your big city ways, don't bring your big city ways and you know, Leonard Bear once told uh somebody at a, a meeting that I was at, uh, Leonard Bear from Hornbook said, I have an ago to thirty that that Mr. McCoy pointed me, didn't wear, he put on shoes till he moved here. He uh went around barefoot and I said, thank you, Leonard. It was his way of saying I was from a smaller town. Um, I think the one, I, I wanna see the town grow. Do I wanna see it forty thousand? No. I, I'd like to see it at five thousand or six thousand, but that's me and that doesn't, my, what I want doesn't matter. It's, it's what we need to do for the community and I think we need to let it grow. I think we need to, um, it would be nice to say we're going to control it, but I don't think, I mean, if we're gonna control it, I'd have a Dairy Queen here already. So I, I can't, yeah, I can't control that.
You're my people.
Yeah, 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 and I can't wait for Arby's to open, so. Um, but uh, yeah, as the mayor pointed out, or, 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 may, may have been uh Mayor Prostem, Arby's is getting ready to open and, and we do need affordable housing for the people that are gonna work there. A wise man once told me that when he worked on getting the Willow Creek Project funded through the state of California and flew down weekly to Sacramento and spent lots of time in the legislature, that initially, when it was first brought in, they felt that they could sustain fifteen thousand people in this community. Um, s- what's that? OJ LaBaron? Uh, excuse me, Fall Creek. Fall Creek, I'm sorry. The Fall Creek, yeah, the Fall Creek Water Project and, and, and most
Now I'm with you.
Most people that are older than me know that OJ LaBaron was instrumental, but had it not been for OJ, we would still be turning off all of our sprinklers in July, August and September and rationing water like they did and let your lawns die and hopefully, you know, and you were here during that time. I think you probably weren't even born. Cause you're, yeah, gosh, you're the kid, yeah. But I wasn't here and I don't think probably any of us were there back in the seventies. I, I think we okay, well, you were here early, then you got twelve years on me.
I'm on semi-bell.
Yeah, she came when I was born.
Corey.
I really dated this.
Thanks.
I would have been here.
Thanks, Corey.
I, I think we do need to grow. Um, I, I think we need to, you know, push for it. We, uh, it's only the water, it's also the outflow of sewage that we have to change. And I know we've already run into that problem. How many years ago was it when they raised water rates? Because we didn't, we didn't have the capacity for sewage either. It wasn't the water, it was the sewage and so, you know, there's a lot of the infrastructure that goes with it. Um, I think the housing is a big part of it. I think we, the city needs to get involved in housing. I'm not saying that we need to own it.
No.
We don't need to own a whole bunch of property, but we need to get involved so that we can manage where it's gonna go. We can, need to get involved so we know that it's gonna happen and we need to get behind it so that we can get these government dollars. If somebody else is gonna take them, you know, I don't want them taking them. We need to take them and we need to build and have places here. So, you know, I, that's what I would say, so.
A prime example is the Crossroads. It's a prime example.
Absolutely.
The county's behind it and that they're not gonna, it's gonna be ran by somebody else. It's gonna be
It's a partnership.
So that goes on to something else, just like we're talking about. Yeah, we can get behind something, we can help develop it.
Yeah.
Somebody else can take it and run with it.
We support it so that it gets built. I mean, if we don't support it, it doesn't get built. You talk to people like Dwayne who've grown up here, movie theaters, bowling alleys, Piggly Wiggly's, they had it all here and uh
No, we never had a Piggly Wiggly.
I know what you meant. Yeah, and the old Siski Daily News, I'm told, yeah. JCPenney's, I mean, we had it all. And I'm not saying we need to have it all that again, but we can have whatever, I mean, we can, you know, we need to invite people in and get them here. And yes, you can take your red pen and cross it.
Well, that is extremely helpful and through the general plan, we will have the numbers that we can grow to based off of water and sewer. And so I have also, I am also under that same impression with the water capacity. Um, and I also think scalability to provide service becomes less expensive once we get over ten thousand people, so thank you.
Can I make a quick comment? When I was at Jackson Street, uh, the two biggest water users in town were Jackson Street School and the Waireka High School.
Really?
Yes, yes, and we got, and they got grants. And I know one of the things Bob Singleton worked on with Steve Neal at the time, just to give you an idea, not only, it wasn't just urinals and toilets, uh, the cooling system used water. And it used gallons and gallons and gallons and hundreds of gallons a day to cool. And so the city worked with both schools on, and we, and we were conserving, and we conserved like our, our water was forty percent less usage. So I think you mentioned that and that's an important thing to look at, just no matter whether there's business or even in like Irvine that uses effluent water to water their, they water all their parks with effluent water.
Yeah, a lot of it is just recirculation.
Not that we'll ever, not that we have them, we need to do that, I understand, but I'm just saying, yeah.
I think the city of Wee does that. They have gray water that they melt up.
Thank you. Any other comments? Did you even, did you know some?
I uh, believe there is a motion in your packets. I believe we do have, need you to make a motion to authorize the city manager to transmit the draft um, after the edits are made to HCD for their ninety-day review.
Okay, Mr. McCoy.
This is Councilman McCoy. I will make the motion to authorize the city manager to transmit a copy of the draft housing element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for the ninety-day draft review cycle.
Councilman Middleton, I will second.
Motion second, I'll do a roll call. Jones Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
Debbie Bear.
Hi.
And I, Dwayne K. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you, Julia. You're the honor.
Go on to eleven B.
Juliana, thank you for
Oh, yes. Letter from the city council thanking many law enforcement and fire protection agencies that supported the city and community during the McKinney Fire Event, Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes, Jason Ledbetter, uh, thank you. I am your city manager. Um, so, you know, obviously the McKinney Fire, we're not gonna kind of relive everything that transpired, but once again, thank you to Chief Lemos and of course, the legendary Chief Gilman, as he's now known. Uh, through that process, I think we're lucky to have a multitude of the staff that we have here, but Reda recognized uh, your assistant city manager early on uh, that it would be very nice gesture to reach out to the hundreds of agencies that responded. Uh, and with our help uh from Sylvia, uh, she has put this draft letter together that uh, this is pretty self-explanatory, so uh, we're looking for the recommended city council action tonight, the motion to approve the letter from the city of Waireka thanking public safety agencies in support of the McKinney Wildfire and authorizing Mayor Cag to sign the letter.
I saw most. I think it's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
You should do it. You have the mayor sign it.
Yep. So I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Wilson.
Councilman Middleton, um, I'll make the motion to approve the letter for the city of Waireka thanking public safety agencies in support of the McKin, McKinney Wildfire authorization, authorization, authoriz- signing, uh, Mayor Cag to sign the letter.
I'll second that motion.
I want, I want Corey to repeat it again.
Yeah.
I'm giving you the authorization to do it, that's all.
Sign it.
I'll be Mayor Cag, there you go.
Roll call. Mayor Jones Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Mr. McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
And I, Dwayne K. Awesome. Thank you. Now we'll move on to twelve. Mr. Ledbetter.
Hello, it is me. Um, so with this done, this is a huge effort. I'm really thankful to Plan West, they're probably not on the call anymore, but uh, from now, we're going to be moving into the other elements of the But uh, from now, we're going to be moving into the other elements of the general plan. So we'll be moving over to land use, um, which is basically talking about like the upper level of zoning code. And what we're going to be doing is focusing on urban design as well. You do not have any urban design guidelines. Uh, and that's why you have a hodgepodge of design styles, which is fine if that's what you would like to do. Um, but we really haven't done any outreach on that, so we're actually going to be repurposing the planning commission meeting in October to be an urban design workshop at the community building. And so we will have arts and crafts basically in a very constructive way. Um, and so really hoping that you guys can uh attend that if you would like. Uh, we can even notice it as a joint meeting between you two if that, if you really care to. But we'll have a number of activities to go through and guided, uh, just to get some input from everyone on one, if you would like design guidelines, uh, urban design. I know that came out in the R E R C um workshops that Tanya had mentioned earlier. A lot of people had remarked on the need for some uh design guidelines. Um, and so we want to get a feel for one, if you'd like to do that, and two, what do those look like? Cause you can be a plethora of designs if you haven't noticed the different cities you visited. So uh, the other thing too is we're going to be working on your twenty forty four vision. So like I said, that's our next big thing as well, because it doesn't make sense to move forward without one. So we're going to be reviewing the results of that and some of the workshop results at Planning Commission to see what they would like to do for future public outreach on that. So those are the two uh next things we're going to be working on. So, awesome. Thank you.
Can I get one clarification? And you've done this numerous times. You said the community building.
Yes.
We need clarification, it needs to be community center or theater. Because you've done that numerous times, this is a community building.
Yes, that is, and so that over there.
So.
Okay.
Would for future clarifications, call the community center.
Okay, I apologize. We, so internally, we call this the city council chamber. So it's like, we get it, but no, that thank you. We'll make sure to do that. That makes sense why people are coming here instead of there um for a couple of our um open houses. So thank you, I'll make sure that's right. All right, have a good night.
All the way to dance.
So Jason Ledbetter, this is my city manager staff report. So obviously I think everybody in town is aware that Caltrans has started their project on Highway Three.
Especially at the south end.
Because it didn't have any water today.
Everything was, they got fixed though. It was quite the chore. I'm sure he's going to.
Yeah, so there were two different water issues that have transpired from Sunday into Monday. Um, and that affected, I think, the county building over there on Fair Lane and the Campbell Track area. And that was a pipe that burst and that has been rectified. And then we have another entity in town doing work, not Caltrans, I'm not going to name them here, but they did hit a water main earlier today. That wasn't work the city was doing, but the city had to go obviously rectify that. And at some point this afternoon, I was talking to Destin from Rayleigh's when the water was kicked back on, so. Um, we have been working internally with Chief Gilman on the school resource officer contract, so that's coming to a close. Um, on nine twenty at the next meeting, you will see the PLHA funding kind of come to a close hopefully with um us sending that money to the county. Um, we have the COC meeting on nine seven. Uh, we were, we will meet, I believe, Mayor Cag, myself and Sarah Kallard. Uh, we still need to finalize our options for the warming center as we head into fall and we explored multiple options in the summer that just never panned out. So we're going to have to come back to some of the original ideas, so hopefully we'll have some clarity to bring to you guys for our options uh for this coming winter. Um, and I think that we've kind of tiptoed around this, but there's some opportunities. We first and foremost earlier today or yesterday, I signed some documentation on the planning grant for the fire hall planning document. Uh, we still have to get a letter after that document gets submitted. Um, so we should hopefully, I know we've said this multiple times, but hopefully in the next thirty days, we have processed more paperwork and we should receive that letter. So with that and some of the other opportunities that exist, um, to seek clarification on what the fire department should look like in the future, what the fire hall should look like in the future. I am recommending that we do an ad hoc committee where we include obviously Chief Lemos and the volunteer group. Uh, and I would like two council members, and I'm wondering tonight if you guys would be willing to take that on or if there were two of you that were interested.
There you go.
Two pens, but it's.
Well, if I'm, if I'm on it, I would be interested in that.
And I think.
No.
Well, we would want to do, we would want to start before the election for sure and to have our first meeting before the election, so anybody.
Anybody.
Yeah, what is the interest level and who would like to participate in that? Is that? So council member, okay. And then uh, just the last, well, I have, then I have the update on the shopping cart ordinance, but um forgive me because we had a request for multiple workshops in the past and uh, we have one tomorrow. And then we have a closed session that takes care of two workshops, I believe. Um, and then this was a special meeting because the nine six got canceled. I know we have a personnel review that we want to look at, which I think can happen in a closed session. Am I missing another workshop? Or did we kind of, yes, we have strategic planning for sure that will come up in October.
There was one dealing with property. There was one dealing with personnel. Uh, there was, I can't read my own writing, city uh. What was that?
Good, I'm lost.
This one tonight.
Oh, okay.
The city planning. Um, we had talked, but it looks like we, uh, we had talked about needing to meet, you talked about gray, nile lights and all that stuff, but it looks like.
That's taken care of.
Authorized you to do that. Then I thought there was one more too, because I, when I went out last time, I was in the, I had written four down.
I thought there were four.
Yeah, so, because I was going to ask you about it when we met later. Yeah, I go, go ahead, keep going. I, I, I'm, don't wait for me.
And maybe this Friday, we can discuss that, Mr. McCoy. Uh, just because I want to make sure that I'm hitting all of the needs that you guys had, but I feel like we got a lot done. We scheduled one for tomorrow at one o'clock. Um, and then we have a closed session to discuss uh negotiations at that point, which I think was also a, a request, so. Um, as more come up, I will be in touch with you guys and start scheduling those. So on the shopping cart ordinance, this is from eight twenty three. Um, grocery outlet has been very good from what I'm being told when the, since the policy came out. The two stores that were consistently dealing with their Rayleigh's and Walmart, Destin from Rayleigh's had contacted me, but since the water was out, we just spoke over the phone. So I think he wants to come in and kind of flesh out more of the requirements over the shopping cart ordinance. Um, the carts are getting picked up, you know, relatively often. Um, but code enforcement is, is still picking up quite a few carts and taking them to the yard. Um, I think this is a new program, so it's all about just the annoyance of enforcement. And so I think that that is happening. Uh, Walmart has been going over to the yard to pick up uh their own carts over the past weeks. But talking to Rayleigh's today, I think it may take some intervention as far as finding somebody locally that may be somebody that picks up carts for all the businesses. I think there's an opportunity there. I've always felt like a landscaper could do that on the side with a contract with all of these individual businesses, so. Is he interested?
No, he's, he mentioned it to me, I know that, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. And so that is all I have. Thank you.
Fees was the other one that we talked about. I think we're doing that tomorrow. Fees was the, oh, the other one that somebody.
Yeah, we're discussing workshops. That's probably, yeah, that's probably what Paul's going to cover then. Good. Good, 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 good. The Chiefs.
Getting late.
Everybody's like, okay, we're done.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll go to council statements then.
I'll go, boy.
Jared, I had the pleasure of being in Prescott, Arizona.
Well, yeah, um, you, you may have a little authority, you have a beautiful memorial to their nineteen fire fighters who died in the early fire. I don't know if you've uh, and they've got like weed shirt and hand ranch shirts, so this, I brought that back, I think that's what I like more for a case or something.
Well, I'm.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Wow. Did you get else?
No, no, I was very touched, so I was wondering.
Cool. Good, I'm going to be quick too. Can you leave? Um, I just want to, uh, Mayor Cag was there and um, Jason and Juliana and members of police department. We were invited to the Rain Rock Casino for their um groundbreaking event for their expansion. And they put on a nice lunch and uh, it was nice to hear from all the tribal committees and um, appreciative and their kindness of just, you know, their vision. And so it was a great event. Um, there, it's going to be amazing. They have uh, and they said they would bring, if they wanted us, wanted them to come down and bring the drawings to the council meeting, they would. Cause they have new pictures of renderings that they weren't here before. That shows the pool, the hotel, everything, it's amazing. So hopefully we can ask them to come back, so the other council members and then maybe hopefully there'll be more citizens in the um, audience that could see it because it's going to be beautiful. And um, yeah, just great group of people up there and we had a good time, great food is catered by, what is it, by the trading market? Yeah, Ken Burns, so it's good. Um, other than that, just things have been crazy busy. It doesn't feel like we're going into fall with the weather out there. There we keep saying, oh, fall's around the corner, I'm so excited, well, it doesn't feel like it out there today. It doesn't feel like it's around the corner. It's crazy, but other than that, um, that's it. So thank you to Rain Rock for inviting all of us. It was great to um, see their vision and I think they're going to be done by twenty twenty four, they said.
Yeah, they should be. I believe it's January, early February, they'll be done in twenty twenty four.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be great. It's going to be um, a much needed uh day of art place that Siski County or Waereka doesn't have, so it can be awesome. So hopefully we can have them back to bring the drawings again.
I got on the list, I'll call.
Awesome, thanks. That's it.
I'm already going to break too. Hi, I'm sorry, I missed the. Round break. Yeah, of course, you have seen, you know, I've seen these presentations. These presentations, it was. Sorry, I missed it. It's my husband who's here. We actually, we have found that nothing. Just once time, yeah, I've been on this council for eight years, I think it's been including three years. Yeah, we've taken a nice vacation and gone to see my sister and her brother come down. I know, and I was just thinking to you after, so, and relaxing.
You don't want to talk politics.
I'm having a good easy.
So I just want to add on with that, with the Rain Rock, that was good, you know, they emphasized the amount of jobs that were going to be coming into the area and then their future expansion too, you know, there's going to be more, more to come on them too, but this is going to help out with more jobs. And like I stated in my little speech, I said that um, that it will bring in, you know, people from this area or into this area that would not normally stop in this area. So it brings in um, income or it brings in revenue, I should say, to Waereka that we would normally get. Even though if they're spending up there, yeah, we don't get the tax base up there, but a lot of the people that go up there, they come around, they, they toodle around Waereka. They'll buy gas, they may buy something else, you know, so there's, there's definitely a source of uh, revenue that comes in with in conjunction to that. So it was interesting. I got to do a little thing with Channel Twelve at that day and then I got another thing next, that Friday to do with Channel Five too. So it was, it led to uh, Craig Small and I got to talk with him and uh, on Channel Five and talked about the fire actually. And was able to uh, express um, how well our, our team, our Waereka team did, our, our fire department, our shit, police department, our city staff, and I expressed heavily how well they did on during the fire and being able to evacuate everybody at a timely. Cause they asked me at um, Channel Five, they asked me, was there anything that would, would do different? And I go, you know, there's always things that would do different, but I go, all in all, our, our team did an excellent job. They did an amazing job and stepped up to the plate and kept everybody safe and, and that was the main thing. So it was good, it led into that conversation. So they also asked me uh, uh, Channel Five uh, about the homeless shelter and I said, well, it looks like they, the county got a grant and hopefully it will come through and we'll see what happens. So it'll be good to see what happens on the homeless shelter. But uh, with that in mind, we have a, like you said, a COC meeting next week, so it is open to the public. So whoever wants to attend, more than welcome to come to it. Uh, we'll have mainly um, the things that we just discussed today on that was just updates on what's going on with that county. Uh, with the shelter and the grant and a few other things, so mainly updates we'll have. We're also going to um, discuss, so anybody that wants to be willing to help out with next year's uh, point in time count. Um, we'll be looking for volunteers for a point in time count, so whoever wants to help out, we're going to do things a little different. So I don't have so much on my plate. Um, we're going to each section, each area, um, like in, would it be Happy Camp, McLeod or wherever. Um, it's going to be, have their own designated person to run all those and I'm just going to oversee the whole thing because it's.
Yeah.
It got a little too overwhelming the last couple of years doing that, so, yeah. So we're going to have um designated people, so I'll be looking for somebody in the Waereka area to run Waereka. And I'm just going to oversee it and give them all my notes and let them run with it. So whoever wants to run Waereka point in time, there's um, a lot to do, but whoever wants to step up the plate.
You'll have to train.
So Debbie.
You're going to have.
Which is, Debbie, are you volunteering?
I still work all day. But you will train somebody.
Yeah, you want it, oh, you want to be trained?
No.
Oh, so she's volunteering and wants to be trained, oh, great, I got a big old binder.
I do my community service in other ways.
Cool. But other than that, everything's great. Business, like you said, it's been awesome, just crazy busy, but um, life's good. So thank you all for coming and meeting adjourned.